I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting order for October 28th, 2025. Before we get to the agenda tonight, I'd just like to state some, a few comments before we start tonight. This is public comment tonight. This is not an open debate. I'll ask for respect for anybody that speaks tonight, as well as anybody that listens. I'd like no outbursts of clapping, booing, anything that gets out of control, and we will clear this room. So, let's respect everybody as equals when we come up to the microphone. Thank you. I'm gonna move on now to item one is roll call. Nancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Sulfa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lohman?
Peeper?
Here.
Baron Bach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Barazza?
Alderman, Lohman did send a message who will be here, but a little bit late.
Second thing on the agenda tonight is make sure if you come up to the microphone, you can adjust that, make sure you see the little green light when you speak, and make sure you can hear yourself in the background. That way it gets broadcast. Up next is item three, which is approval of minutes. September 30th, 2025, special meeting, October 14th, 2025, and October 20th, 2025, special meeting. Anybody have any corrections, anything on those? Not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Agreed.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, do we have any items to be removed at or changed this evening? Anybody have anything? Great. We'll move on to items. Item five, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is anybody here, anything not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman, Baron?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follow. Approvals. Approval Cow Executive Session Minutes, October 14th, 2025. Ordinance 2025-58. Extension of the 90-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications for light industrial and general industrial properties in the South River Street Gateway Overlay District. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Agreed.
Motion by Baron, second by Sulfa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move right on to item seven, which is presentation of the downtown occupancy report.
They're all here for you, Anthony, so, you know.
No pressure.
No pressure.
I'm starting to believe that.
Is there a reason why it's not coming up? Okay. I'm like clicking it, I'm like, what's going on here? It's okay. All right. Good evening, council, and good evening in public. Thank you so much for being out today. Basically, this is a presentation to kind of highlight our downtown occupancy report, where we created a dashboard here showing, you know, total occupied commercial buildings, total partial, as well as the vacant properties. Now, this dashboard was created by our GIS division of the IT department, Mike Kamen, who was sitting on the side there in the staff seating. Him and I collaborated with this particular project to demonstrate, one, a little bit of an idea as to what our vacancy rate looks like in terms of what's vacant, what's partially filled, and what's fully occupied. In the past, we've had a lot of people thinking that, you know, the downtown was not, was, there was a lot of vacancies. And me and Mike said, okay, well, maybe we should consider putting something together instead of a paper document, something that visually shows, you know, what our downtown truly looks like. So what we see here is on this, on the right side here, you see the green that's showing total occupied commercial building, total occupied commercial building, and then it breaks down into the vacant and the purple here, magenta or purple, and then the yellow is the total partial. At the bottom of the screen, we have things listed at, you know, the parcel pin, the building occupancy, basically letting us know what's occupied and what's partially occupied, so we just kind of go through here. We also broke this down by business industry. So we have things like automotive, entertainment, mixed use, office space, all of which is captured within our downtown, which is zone downtown mixed use. So it's a pretty flexible zoning that we have for downtown. Then we broke it down into building type. So again, we can see a little bit more detail in terms of like car repair, entertainment, again, mixed use, but just kind of highlighting certain information for that as a further breakdown. And then we have ground square feet. Now with this dashboard, we did not include places like churches or residential. So that's not included. We included ground level, commercial retail space. So with downtown, we have, you know, a couple stories, and we only focus on the bottom levels or the ground levels that indicate businesses and things like that. So as you can see, there is not a lot of vacant areas in Batavia, in the downtown. The unique thing about this particular dashboard, though, is we can actually adapt it to, you know, get the feedback from council as to what you all would like to see. This is literally kind of phase one, initial phase that we wanted to put together, in hopes that you all be able to also provide us feedback as to what else you'd like to see on this dashboard. As I stated before, I have Mike Kamen here, our GIS staff. Basically, he'll talk about any, he'll address any questions regarding any technicals of how we, how he designed it, put it together, in terms of helping us get the vacancies and these numbers that you see in front of you. But I'd like to open it up and just see if you all have any questions, but to further just gauge your attention as to what we have and see what improvements you'd like to make as this, again, is the first initial phase. So I'm all ears.
Lohman, Peeper, go ahead.
Well, let's continue to be updated over time, and roughly what schedule would you say?
Great question. And Mike, if you want to address that timeline in terms of the backend, appreciate it.
Actually, but you can use the microphone, because that'll help project the sound. It's just not being picked up by VATV, what you're saying there.
We also get the information from utility billing when the responsibility for paying the utility bill changes is an indication to us that a space has either become vacant or a vacant space has become occupied.
Alderman, Lancy?
Yeah. Love the data, and I think we can dive in even further on the vacant vacancy side in terms of length of vacancy, you know, maybe even if you dive in further, what was the previous business there, and then maybe even a couple more colors of very recently vacant, and then, you know, stale vacant, whether that be red or blue or whatever.
And that's an interesting concept, too, and I do believe that we have the ability to, number one, change the colors. Mike, I'm not sure if we could speak to the aspect of breaking down length of vacancies with this particular dashboard.
Right. Awesome. Baron Bach?
Just a quick question. I noticed on the map, the pale blue, does that mean the building's off the tax roll? Is that what that means?
Yes, that's correct. We wanted to do that to make it a lot easier compared to the spaces that are filled and where we're talking about occupied versus non-occupied.
So we could potentially show, like, the total square percentage available across the board, and then break it down by category.
Yeah. Good.
So here's some of the dials. I'll go through this for you guys, but like we mentioned earlier, this is industry by square footage, gives a nice little breakdown of that. Industry by number of buildings in a percentage. Breakdown of business type by square footage. Business type by number of business in percentage. Total downtown building occupancy as a count. And I'm sure we could probably even, you know, as Alderman, Lancy mentioned, that we could probably break those numbers down, too, and see where we can go with that as well.
And I do appreciate all the work you guys did on this, because I think just in that first dial, it points out something that I think has been a bit of a fallacy, that we have all these vacant properties in downtown Batavia. Look at the dial. We're only, I mean, it's at like, less than 11% of vacancy, and, you know, like we've all talked about on council already, brick and mortars are really hard to keep sure you keep those things full and occupied, because no, it's just tough. Everybody buys things online now. I think this is great. I guarantee you that we have less vacancy than Geneva or St. Charles at this point in time. So I think that just this alone kind of gets rid of any fallacy that we have all these vacant properties all over town, and we're actually doing pretty good, and there's just a few things that we can, you know, maybe focus on, but I mean, I don't know of any city that's going to have 100% occupancy at all times. I just don't think that's a possibility, especially in today's day and age. So I think this is very helpful, and I appreciate it.
I appreciate that feedback, because one of the things I can tell you about the vacancies is, it's not always about your town. It's not always about, oh, Batavia, you know, they can't keep businesses or things like that. It's more of a, some economic affairs, you know? Some businesses, they, you know, may grow, and they say, okay, well, it doesn't look like Batavia has this layout for me in this particular space. It looks like maybe another surrounding community has the space that I'm ideally looking for. I absolutely love Batavia, but it's just that they don't have what I'm looking for in terms of my specific business. Other businesses have just other needs, and I think that's something that we all have to remember, too, is that we can have a wonderful town, but sometimes businesses have to adapt and go to the places or the spaces that's available at that moment in time, because it kind of fits their criteria that they're looking for. But one of the things that we did with this report was, we wanted to take it from paper to visual. So Alderman, Sulfa, I'm glad that you appreciate this, because it makes it a whole lot easier to tell a story about our downtown. And what's unique about this piece is that we would be able to do this more or less citywide as well. So if we wanted to look at commercial, and separate this out to focus on commercial, we can do that. If we wanted to look at the industrial, we can break that down and do an industrial dashboard. It's really what you all are looking for, but as this has been our first iteration, we wanted to really tell a story about what our downtown looks like in Batavia, and the improvements that we have been making over years. One of the things I can tell you from the economic development perspective is, we've had a lot more businesses looking to come to Batavia. We got some new businesses that have already come to Batavia within my last economic development presentation, and it's just been a really amazing opportunity to see where Batavia's going and how we're growing. We may not be growing exponentially, but we're growing with strategy. We're growing with a sense of purpose. And again, that's why me and Mike wanted to put this all together, so we can share that story.
Baron Bach, let me call on Scott first.
One is kind of to counter, while I love to see that we're only at 11% unoccupied, I would love to see how much of our downtown is parking lot, how much of our downtown is vacant land, because I think when we actually looked at really unoccupied land, we're going to see that number switch a lot. I think a majority of our downtown is parking, and it's vacant properties. So when we flip it that way, I don't think we have the density of businesses that Geneva or St. Charles have, even if our occupancy rate for our existing brick and mortars is lower. And I think that's one of the chief things that we have to address, because I think downtown requires a certain density, a certain critical mass, to get pedestrians moving throughout, and we don't have that yet. The other thing that I would love to see added is the residential piece that you mentioned. If there was an overlay we could put to say which of these buildings also have residential on top, to see what the density of residential is, because I also don't think that we have the same density of humans living downtown as our neighboring cities do.
Those are good points, too, and Mike, is that something that we can look into and see if we can adapt that to the residential aspect as well, as well as the land?
Be able to separate them. You have tech with more data. Your Honor?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of interesting statistics. As most on the council know, I serve as the chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings, Council of Mayors, which includes all 284 cities in the six county area surrounding the city. And we have a staff, we're based at the old post office building in downtown Chicago, and we have a very good staff who's really now getting into keeping track of stuff. And they tell me that Batavia is in the upper realms of being near the leadership of the number of new houses and new residents that are being built within our community. And it would appear to them that between 2022 and the end of 2026, Batavia will have added someplace between eight and 900 new living units into our town. Now, you ask where this is, well, there's 242 of them out on Kirk Road there, Batavia Commons. We got the Pulte development in two different places, on the old Furnace Electric and out west of McKee Street. There's a number of things that are happening that bring this number together, but what we are seeing is, is that these are people who either lived here and want to move back, or there's a lot of new people who want to move in here. One of the things that's very popular is the attached townhome now, that you're seeing a lot of being built, and a lot of those are being taken over by grandparents of people who have already moved to Batavia, but they want to move into the same town where their grandchildren is. And if you ask yourself, what's the big anchor that's really driving people to want to come to Batavia? One of the biggest ones is the quality of the Batavia school system and the success of their school programs. And so we've got a lot of favorable things going, and we're near the top of the list of all the suburbs of things that are happening. So I'm very pleased that we have Anthony and his staff here, that we can talk about all the things that are going on, because I don't know if in the history of Batavia, we've ever had this much positive synergy and action going on, and I'll give our staff a lot of credit for helping this all come together. Thank you.
Any other comment? And thank you, Anthony, for all you put together on this, and you and Mike did a great job on that, and I think that with a couple of suggestions that we've had, I think that just makes that even better, to have more information to try to make decisions on downtown.
We appreciate that, and we're going to continue to work with this dashboard and continue to make it a live document. And I do just want to leave you all with one parting note. We have a very strong downtown vacancy. We had a few vacant areas, but that's an opportunity to be really creative with the type of businesses we bring to Batavia, and how we strategically think about how we want to get those businesses here in Batavia. So what I'm doing is working a lot closer with our brokers, our landlords, the property owners, and even other businesses, to help them understand that we're here to help. We're all here together, our council, our staff, and the overall city of Batavia. So we're very excited to have this dashboard and have been able to share this with you all tonight, so thank you.
I'll side Anthony, thanks. On to item eight on the regular agenda. The first one would be Resolution 2025-123R, authorizing purchase of benches from Noble Winds.
I'll try to be somewhat quick on this, but feel free to discuss it as much as we'd like. This is part of the continuation of constructing the public restroom plaza over where the Tin Shop building currently is. We placed the order for the restrooms a couple weeks ago. That has about a four monthly time. Similarly, part of what we were looking at is, the Batavia Public Art Commission came to us with some benches they were looking at. These are benches made out of recycled windmills, as well as they really facilitate public art, so they would come primed, ready to be painted or put in a vinyl wrap. So that continues both the thought of, you know, Batavia has a long history with windmills and having been a large windmill manufacturer for many decades, but with a modern twist, obviously, as well as being a really good canvas for public art. These benches are more expensive than your standard benches, but what we're trying to do with this plaza and building the public restrooms is not just providing amenity with the restrooms, but really try to create a sense of space and place within the city of Batavia. We continue the bricks that you see on River Street. You'll see cantenary lighting, you'll see some really cool sculptures and artwork as part of this. We just put the property up next door with the three bay garages and to the north of that for redevelopment, and so it's kind of continuing to build out this area with remaining TIF funding, and then so that we are ultimately, as we develop and as we build out, this plaza can become somewhat of a centerpiece, as well as with the farmer's market. It's designed to provide a good amount of additional seating, so between these three benches, there's also going to be benches on some planters that we've got going in there, as well as some general just concrete seating areas as well. So some of the feedback we've heard from city council and others is that there's not enough seating and not enough areas to gather kind of during the farmer's market. So this tries to both address the need for public restrooms, a place to stop for cyclists up and down the Fox River Trail. We'll have a public, we'll have a drinking fountain on the side of the restrooms as well for people to stop there. We'll have a bike repair station, as well as bike lock, or bike racks as well. So we're really trying to create a really well-programmed area with a lot of features in a small place that really creates a sense of place for the residents of Batavia and visitors as well.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this idea. I think it, you know, of course, more public art is a great idea, especially on that River Street corridor around the farmer's market, and it's sort of serendipitous, I guess, that it's recycled windmills, too, right? Like, it couldn't be more on-brand for us. Though the price is a little bit high, like, I understand people would probably look at that and say, oh, what, for a bench? But the fact that we're going to be getting local artists in to build that, for me, makes it seem like a really smart idea to try to get that River Street to where we want it to be. So I think this is a really smart idea, and I support it.
Alderman Malone, I kind of talked a little bit about what I was going to say, because I want to emphasize, he did mention the cost, but the emphasis is, it's still within the budgeted amount that we have for this whole project. So it's with, it's not, we're not having to do anything different. It's still within budget, still what we approved, we're not going over budget, so that's okay.
Alderman, Lancy?
Yeah, well, we will still need to go out for bid for the rest of the project. That should be coming rather soon, so we will know more exactly about where pricing comes in. We're right around budget, maybe a little over, but we do have some extra funding sources that we would intend to pull from, so we'll have that conversation as we move forward. But this would not fundamentally change kind of the major budget picture.
I like this, Max, it's a very unique opportunity for us, the art piece to it. I had asked you just this evening to send me some pictures of different views of that, which you did. I would recommend if you could send that to the rest of the councils, they can look at for council meeting, they're really cool looking, and I think the, oh, there you go.
Yeah, so we would be getting two of these arches, larger benches, and then one of these Acadias, designed to kind of be in an area where we're putting some public art sculptures, kind of trying to create almost a centerpiece area for photos and other things like that. So we're going to try to put a little sign on there, letting people know that these are in fact made from recycled windmills. We think that's really a good aspect of placemaking, both connecting the city's, you know, longstanding history, you know, you look right outside, there's a giant old windmill, with the modern version of what is a windmill and what those are. So thank you for your comment. I can definitely send around all those pictures as well to all of you, so I'll do that.
Lehman?
Actually, thank you for the pictures, because it does address something I was going to mention, that I also like that it provides some shade, it looks like.
Yes.
So, you know, sitting out on River Street during the market or whatever, there is some shade provided. But also, Batavia has a huge appreciation for art, so this just fits right in with our character, our nature, our values. Wilson Street Bridge has those sculptures on it, and I always see people downtown admiring them and walking and taking photos, so this just fits right in, so thank you.
I have one question, Max. Have we worked with Main Street to figure out how we're going to reorient the shed that they have there, or the?
Our plan is to keep the shed as is and not move that.
Okay, so leave that in the same spot?
Yes, that is our intent.
And just build around it?
Exactly.
Lancy?
I can't remember. Did you say we are putting in place a mechanism to make sure it's a local artist?
Yeah, we're going to be working with the Public Art Initiative to design, we're going to be ultimately probably using a vinyl wrap on this. We're still in conversations, Lori Bodderman is our liaison to the Public Art Commission. They've been involved in this project for a while now, both with the, we're working on artwork on the ramp, we're working on artwork on this. We're also going to try to have a local or a call for artists for a small metalworking piece that we're working on as well, in the plaza area. So there will be a number of aspects and opportunities, either for local artists or for locally decided artwork, if that makes sense.
Yeah. No, it's great. I give public comment about our artwork all the time. I love it, I think most people do, so it's great.
Alderman, Bach?
As long as they're a full house, and that Tin Shop has been there for over 100 years. When are we scheduled to have that demolished? Is that coming up?
I have that answer behind you.
Mr. Buneck? Yeah, I would just move that we send for a positive recommendation to Council Resolution 2025-123R, authorizing purchase of benches from Noble Winds. Agreed. Lehman? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to 8.2, which is discussion on civil immigration enforcement on city property ordinance.
Sure. In this, this.
Move on to 8.2, which is discussion on civil immigration enforcement on city property ordinance.
Sure. In this, this topic is a discussion that was prompted by a request from several aldermen to place an item on the agenda to discuss whether the city should adopt an ordinance, either a welcoming city ordinance and/or an action to prohibit civil immigration enforcement on city-owned property. And in response to that, staff pulled together some research, looked at a couple of other cities' ordinances, a couple of ordinances that had been adopted at the county level. We looked at Chicago, Carpenter'sville, and Evanston as the cities, and the Will County and Lake County ordinances. And just wanted to pull out what some of the common elements that we saw in these, some takeaways, that the prohibition is focusing not just on law enforcement assistance, but on the physical use of publicly owned or publicly controlled property. And that would be, we'd be focusing on city-owned property if the city were to adopt an ordinance. It wouldn't focus on property owned by other government organizations within our community. They typically define or reference staging areas, processing locations, operations base for clarity. The implementation requirements usually require signposting and/or prohibitive signage, identification of what properties are effective and affected, and in some cases, potential physical barriers. They do have clear exceptions that this applies only to civil immigration enforcement, meaning enforcement of federal civil immigration laws, not criminal enforcement, is what is at issue in the legislation. In many cases, cooperation or enforcement under criminal warrants or federal criminal immigration enforcement remains unaffected. And then also the legal framing. These provisions often reference constitutional rights, community trust, and compliance with state and federal law, making clear that local jurisdictions are exercising their home rule regulatory authority over property usage, rather than attempting to control federal immigration law generally. And it's, one important legal consideration is that while these measures do constrain the use of local government property for federal civil immigration enforcement, they do not override federal supremacy or bar federal agents from entering property with valid judicial warrants. They constrain what local government will allow on its own property.
Before Kevin speaks, do you just want to reiterate what you said at the top of the meeting, since I know more people trickled in?
Sure. Basically, what I wanted to say was that we need to have respect for everybody that comes up to speak, both in the deus up here and also the public. I'd like to keep the comments to three minutes, so that way we can get through, everybody gets a chance to speak, as long as we have enough time. And then any kind of outburst, cheering, booing, anything like that will clear the room. That's not why we're here. We're here to listen, we're here to express our views, and, you know, we need to respect everyone.
Are we limiting the time? Because I see other places that have said 30 minutes.
Oh.
Oh, for total?
For comments.
I'd like to keep it, you know, yeah, we have a list. We've got three pages here, so if we try to keep it to three minutes or less, we can do that. And if that means the person before you said something you agree with, you can say you agree with them, and that's why you're here. So that way, we don't have to have here the same thing 50 times or 100 times. And we understand that that's why most people are here, on whatever side you're on.
I will have a timer here, and I will indicate to speakers when they have 10 seconds left of the three minutes.
Great, thank you. First off, just to put it out there to begin with, I support this ordinance. I asked for it to be put on the agenda, and so just right off the bat, but you're knowing where I'm coming from here, right? You know, as an alderman, I feel that I have a duty to support the rights, the safety, and the dignity of all of our citizens. That's why I pushed this forward. And before we go any further, though, I just want to frame this discussion pretty clearly. We are not talking about immigration policy. I know we think we are, but we really are not. We're talking about what the city can do with its property and its engagement with federal enforcement effort, right? That's what we're here for. The federal government, very clearly, based on the Constitution, gets to decide what immigration policy is, isn't, whatever. So if folks are trying to take us down that path, again, not what the intention of this ordinance is or what we're really talking about here. So then the second question becomes, can we do this? A big question being, is this possible? And from my understanding and the extensive research I've done, yes, pretty clearly, right? We do have separation of powers, we have different levels of government. The 10th Amendment gives us the ability to control our own property, and in fact, there's even a doctrine called the, I wrote it down because I was going to get it wrong, the doctrine of anti-commandeering, right? Which pretty clearly states that local governments do not have to back up and support and enforce federal laws. They don't. That's a doctrine well-established in the Supreme Court. Justice Alito is the latest to write an opinion reaffirming, again, that local governments do not need to enforce federal law, right? So then the question becomes, should we do this, right? And that's a question that we need to figure out. And for me, the clear answer is yes, we should do this, right? It's the responsibility of the local government to ensure, again, the right, the safety, and the human dignity of all the residents who live here in Batavia. I mean, I have some prepared notes, but let's go off script a little bit here, right? When people are afraid to leave their homes, to go to the library, go to City Hall, to report to the police department crimes that have occurred, we are all less safe, right? First and foremost, we do have a right to due process, to not have unreasonable searches and seizures. We, as a city, have a right to use our property and our resources as we see fit. As I've already said, we need to protect those rights. But it's not me, I might say, right? I'm a middle-class white guy living on Van Nordwick Drive in Batavia. ICE isn't going to knock down my door. They just aren't. However, when my neighbors are afraid to go to the police department, when they won't engage in city services, when the family I sat with at work is telling me they're not sending their kid to school because they're afraid mom's going to get picked up at the bus station when she was born in America, well, then I'm less safe. Because now my community's no longer engaged, people aren't out on the streets, they aren't seeing the real crime that's happening, our police officers aren't able to catch the actual murderers and thieves and all those bad things, right? These are all the reasons why I think it's really important. We need to protect our rights, we need to protect our safety. And finally, there's the human dignity component. You know, frankly, I don't want services that I have a say in being used to snatch people off the street in broad daylight without due process, without a judicial warrant, without the rights that we have as humans and as Americans, right? That's a dignity question. So those are the reasons why I support it, right? And there's a little bit of grandstanding. Let's not pretend like that's not what I just did there, but I think that it's pretty clear that as a local government, we have the responsibility to use our resources appropriately within the bounds of the law. But there are legitimate concerns about this type of ordinance. First would be the enforceability of it. I don't fully agree that this is unenforceable, but I suppose there could come a time where ICE may show up on one of our parking lots and set up their little SUVs and do their little operations, and I don't know. I don't know if we can enforce that. But that sort of is beside the point. In a lot of ways, what this ordinance is doing is it's showing that maybe we don't have the literal power to protect the rights, safety, and dignity of our residents, but we can make a symbolic action. We can say something symbolically that says, hey, this is our town, and we get to decide how we use it. And maybe they push us around, and maybe we fall over, but that doesn't mean the symbolism didn't matter. Symbolism is important. We've had a lot of late nights here in this room, talking about symbols flying on flagpoles and tying ribbons around things. We understand that symbols matter, and those symbols also talk about who we are as a community, right? Laws aren't just what we do and how we do it, it also is our values. When we pass a bag fee, right? When we create a green program, we create accessibility standards for our sidewalks and our buildings, we're not just saying you need to do these things, we're also saying we value inclusion, we value the environment, we value other things. And this ordinance also will show the values that we have, right? We value local control, we value the rights of our residents, the safety of our town, and the dignity of the people here. The Supremacy Clause comes up a lot, right? That's a common refrain here. And federal law does supersede local law, local ordinance. We are not passing a law that says immigration should not be enforced in our town. What we're saying is that if the government chooses to do so, they need to follow due process, find the right warrants to use our property. If they can't do that, well, hey, go find your own parking lot, right? Go find your own spot to stay. That's all we're saying. So there is no supremacy clause argument here. We are not trying to supersede the laws of the government or overstep our bounds. We're simply saying, this is our property, and we get to choose how it's used. Believe it or not, this is empowering small government. This is a small government move. If you believe in small government, I think this ordinance makes a whole lot of sense. All right, so then the final thing here, I'm going to say, is that, again, as the city council, we do have to make some tough decisions. I know that this is going to be a long night, and it's going to be hard, and I know that I just spoke for a long time and grandstanded just a little bit here, but I really do believe that this type of action and these types of decisions are small things that we can do to really make our town a little more inclusive and a little bit better, right? Other neighbors have done it, Carpenter'sville, Cook County, we have other neighbors who are considering this and passing this at this moment. We can join them, we're not alone, okay? And we can show that this region is the welcoming place we all know it is. We've heard the mayor tell stories time and time again about how, when he was a child, it was an inclusive town. We had African-American, we had Hispanic, we had all the different types of people here in Batavia, at a time when that was maybe not common in the suburbs. We can continue that trend, we can carry that legacy that was built on some great predecessors of ours forward. So again, I really think we need to adopt this. Just to be extra clear, to give guidance to staff, what I'm looking for is barring civil immigration action on city property without a judicial warrant. I would also like to see some designations of some safe spaces, where we are going to attempt to the best of our abilities within the bounds of the law to prevent actions near sensitive sites, schools, libraries, daycare are what come to mind, city services as well. You shouldn't have to worry about paying your bill. And these are the reasons that I'm really looking for this to pass. Again, I'm not interested in a discussion about immigration policy, that's the federal government. Instead, I just want us to affirm that our rights and our safety, it's not a privilege, something that we have to stand up for, something we have to defend, and that's something that we need to do here today. Thank you.
Anybody else on the council have anything to say before we start? We will now open it up for public comment. Again, I'd like to keep that to three minutes per person. We'll start off on sheet number one, Daniel Donahue.
Hi, Dan Donahue, 1211 Shidler Drive. Tonight's discussion should be, how does the city of Batavia protect its citizens from the Gestapo ICE army that is violating our constitutional rights, attacking, disappearing, abducting, shooting, beating, and torturing people in America? They don't care if you're pregnant, disabled, young, or old. They hide behind their masks like the brown shirts of Gestapo agents in Nazi Germany. I don't want this on the streets, parks, school grounds, or bike paths in Batavia. I don't want pepper balls, rubber bullets, and tear gas used on the great people of Batavia or others in America that are exercising their freedoms and constitutional rights. I don't want people racially profiled. I don't want the LGBTQ community and disabled communities harmed and abused. The city of Batavia should absolutely approve an ordinance to prohibit the use of city property by federal authorities for civil immigration arrests. Every city resource, including our police department, should be used to protect the residents of Batavia against the illegal fascist, racist, misogynistic Gestapo actions of ICE and the Trump regime. We need Batavia protecting our constitutional rights, not violating them. We do not want a bunch of untrained KKK Proud Boys and January Sixers running around with masks, abducting, harming, and disappearing Americans and destroying lives of property. I'm tired of seeing elderly people and women thrown to the ground, children terrorized, and peaceful protesters assaulted, abducted, and tear gassed. My father received a Purple Heart and was 100% disabled veteran in the Navy during World War II. Two of my uncles fought in the trenches in Germany to also defeat Hitler and fascism. The Rockford Register Star states that 17,521 Illinoisans were killed in combat or died from wounds and injuries sustained in battle between December 7, 1941, and September 2, 1945. All the Americans fought fascism in World War II, were Antifa. They were against fascism. They would be disgusted that a draft dodger is leading a fascist takeover of America. We need to fight fascism like those great Americans before us. Batavia does not want to be on the wrong side of history. We do not want to be on a record as supporting ICE. Are you racist? Are you fascist? General Patton and the Greatest Generation did not fight so that we would lose our democracy to a draft dodger pedophile. The world would not be destroyed by, the world will not be destroyed by evil people, but by good people who do nothing to stop it. Hopefully, there will always be good people courageous enough to take on the bad guys. This is the only way humanity can hope for salvation.
Up next is Matthew Zingle. I apologize if I butcher anybody's name tonight.
Hi, my name is Matthew Zingali. I've called Batavia home since 1992. I graduated from Batavia High School in the class of 2000, and in 2014, my wife and I bought our first home here in Batavia, and I'm raising two sons in the city. I came to Batavia and stayed here for the same reasons many of you did, because this is a community that looks out for each other, a place built on compassion, safety, and decency. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I want to make sure that Batavia stays that kind of place. I'm asking you to pass an ordinance that says our city property cannot be used for ICE operations, that we will not allow our parks, parking lots, public buildings to become tools of fear or trauma. Let's start out with a simple truth, a very basic truth, is that no human being is illegal. Being undocumented is not a crime, it's a civil offense. Many of these people are here legally, seeking asylum or maybe overstayed a visa. They're getting picked up outside of courthouses while legally doing it the right way and being whisked away. That's not justice, that's cruelty disguised as law enforcement. These raids just don't target the undocumented, they undermine the Constitution. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments guarantee every person due process of the law, every person, not just citizens. Yet ICE routinely detains people without judicial warrants, holds them for weeks without hearings, and denies them access to attorney. Again, that's not law and order, and that's lawlessness. We've seen over 170 U.S. citizens wrongly detained. Think about that. 170 U.S. citizens that have proved their citizenship, arrested, locked up, put away for no reason other than they were in the wrong place at the wrong time, maybe didn't have an ID. Our alderman said earlier, can the city even do that? Yes, they can. It's called, there's the anti-commandeering principle, it's been reaffirmed in the Prince versus United States and Murphy versus NCAA. That means that Batavia can decide that our property, our staff, and our resources will not be used for civil immigration enforcement, and cities across the country are already doing this. Beyond the laws is the human cost. When ICE raids happens, they don't look like calm, lawful operations, they look like something out of a nightmare. We just saw Operation Midway Blitz in Chicago, where helicopters thundered over neighborhoods, families were zip-tied, children naked in a van outside. Citizens, we don't want to bring that to our community. How are we going to explain that to our children? A lot of these enforcement officials are also masked, unnamed, refuse to give any identification. We're seeing places of imitation, impersonation, and abuse. If Batavia doesn't draw a line, we're welcoming sanctioned violence into our community, we're putting every resident, citizen or not, at risk. I'm here tonight because when I grow up, or when my sons grow up, I want to tell them that I spoke up and that I did something. You have the power to do something more than speak, you can act, you can make sure Batavia stands for fairness and peace of what's right. Outside this building is a bridge with the words "peace on earth," it's become a symbol of the city, but let's make that message mean something. Let's not be hypocrites and talk about peace while turning a blind eye to suffering. Let's live up to our word.
No clapping? No, 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 no.
We'll never get through this night if we keep doing it. Up next will be Michael. Up next will be Michael Pierce.
Yeah, good evening. Mike Pierce, retired Army, 20 years. My dad was also World War II, and my family's been here a long time. So I respect everybody's service. And I respect all the people who want to come here to America and be part of our great country. I'm not a fascist, though, and I don't like being called one. And I'm not a racist, and I don't like being called one. I'm here because I think our communities, there's a lot of things that people manipulate, and they say things. And if you have some concerns about the federal law, then rather than go on hearsay, or as we call barracks lawyers, I recommend that you bring in somebody from ICE who can give us what the actual U.S. codes are and what their laws and what their ability to do within the law is. That way, there's no confusion, and we can kind of de-escalate a lot of the tension. I think that it's important that we follow federal laws. And once we start picking and choosing which ones we're going to follow or not follow, you go down a little bit of a slope. Now, Batavia is a great place. It's a safe place. But there's other communities that maybe they've kind of gone down that road, and it's not so safe. And maybe there's reasons why people have concerns about people who come in, because we live in a dangerous world. There's been a lot of rise of terrorism around the world. There's drugs and trafficking where people are going in, and that's just a fact. It's not everybody, we know that. But there are some people. And it's so much to ask that people who are out there doing their job have a little bit of protection when we live in a system where people are doxing people and saying where they live when they're out there following the rules by the laws that the people of America have enacted. So I just think we need to bring an expert in who knows what the laws are, that it can explain it clearly to everybody, and has the benefit of seeing, oh, okay, I understand the difference between civil or judicial or administrative. You know, let's take it down, take down the atmosphere, but let's make sure that we understand when we're going to vote on something or if they're going to pass an ordinance on that, that people have the opportunity to know what it is overall. So there's not this rise. And I really think that we've got to keep the tone down, okay? Most of us here are all wanting to do the right thing for our community. And I'll tell you one thing. I heard this term about, whatever they said about the administration, I think the word was regime. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I was standing with hundreds of people in a line down in Springfield, Democrat, Republicans, and we're all talking together. We all have one thing in mind. We all want to make the state a better place to live. And there's so many bright, shiny objects out there that they're distracting from people. And I think if we had this many people out there who are concerned about taxes in this county that just got raised, or the grocery tax, which just got raised and going to affect people's bottom line, I think that would be a really worthwhile thing to be talking about. So anyway, that was my suggestion, and that's my comments. And I thank you very much. Have a great day.
Next will be Cassandra Williams.
Cassandra Williams, 521 South Batavia Avenue. Come next May of 2026, my wife and I will have lived in Batavia for 20 years. Her roots run even a little bit deeper than that. Her parents are both graduates of Batavia High School, and her maternal grandparents built their home and owned a business here in Batavia before their passing. So we have a lot of history and a lot of investment in Batavia. And I have to say that in the almost 20 years that we've lived here, I've been encouraged and very thrilled to see the growth in Batavia, the changes in Batavia. I think the longer we live here, the more welcome we feel. I believe that Batavia has become more diverse, more welcoming, more engaging. It's been wonderful to see the downtown grow. I couldn't agree more with Marsha Elke's comments earlier about just seeing Batavia blossom and the growth in housing and the things that we're seeing here. I love how Main Street Batavia, our businesses here, there's no sense of competition. Our businesses love and support one another, give shout out to each other on Facebook. Batavia is the kind of community that I really value living in. And I think that passing an ordinance that says that city property cannot be used for ICE operations is just one more brick in this foundation that we have that says people are welcome here, people are safe here, they are valued here, they have a right to due process here. I don't think we need to have any experts come in and explain the law to us when it comes to a simple thing like due process. And we know that the people who are being swept up by ICE are not getting it. I recently read a statistic that 71.5% of all of the people nationwide who have been picked up by ICE have no criminal convictions. 71.5%. And I looked up many different sources online, because I know you can find whatever you want to find on the internet. I also was reading an article the other day when they did the operation at the airport lot for all of the rideshare drivers. And the Department of Homeland Security was so happy to say people had been arrested. And I would concur, I would say that the things that they had history for, our president and cabinet probably have more of a criminal history. So please support this ordinance for Batavia.
Thank you. Up next would be Lisa Monroy.
Hello. I'm here for a number of reasons. I'm here because I'm an American. My parents were American. My grandfather was American. When the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, my grandfather enlisted. He was a highly decorated captain during World War II in Europe. So I am here on behalf of his memory. And I'm also here because I am a descendant of immigrants. I have ancestors who came from Ireland, Germany, England, France, Scotland, and Wales. Were it not for them, I would not be here. I am also here because I speak more than one language. Having learned that second language, I became introduced to an immigrant community that I love. This community believes in God we trust. This community works extremely hard. This community loves their families with all their hearts. This community is law-abiding. I'm also here because I'm a wife and a mom. I have children in Batavia schools. And I am a wife of 20 years. I've been married to my best friend of 22 years. My husband is an American citizen. He does not have white skin like me. Every day, he goes to work. Every day, he goes to the store. I fear for his safety. I fear what would happen to my children if something happens to their father. And I fear that I could lose my best friend of 22 years. So I am asking you to pass this ordinance on behalf of my ancestors, my family, my grandfather. After my grandfather came home from the war, after being admitted to the hospital for shell shock, many years down the line when I knew him, he had his favorite book by his side all the time. His book was the Bible. He knew it like the back of his hand, and he had it highlighted and underlined. So I am here as an American. I live in the land of the free. But this is not the first time that I have been afraid for my family. And I would like to just close by saying, there's a passage in Exodus that reads, "Do not mistreat aliens, for you were aliens in Egypt."
Next would be Roxanne Shilka.
Good evening. I'll say right at the outset, I'm going to encourage you not to pass this ordinance. I found it ironic, the last meeting you had, that you inducted a new alderman who swore to defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Illinois. Yet you gave a platform to a woman who said, I can't remember her name, who said F you in Spanish to immigration enforcement, and went on to say how everybody has the right to do whatever they want, to live wherever they want, to demand free things from everybody else. That's not true. We are all immigrants. It's not that I'm anti-immigration. I am not. Everyone here probably is a descendant of an immigrant. We were built on immigration, doing it the right way, coming in the front door, not breaking in the back door and demanding. Also, I want to make a distinction between human rights and legal rights. We are all made in the image of God and have ultimate dignity and worth. Absolutely, that's the case. But not everyone has the rights of a U.S. citizen. The Constitution does not apply to illegal aliens. ICE wants to get criminals. So when you interfere, you are hindering their ability to do their job, okay? They don't care about your hairdresser, your house cleaner, your roofer, your landscaper. They're after criminals who have murdered, raped, and killed U.S. citizens. So I have heard from law enforcement officials that when you try and stop... ICE is going after specific people. When you hinder that, that causes them to spread a wider net. People are going to get rounded up that don't need to be. So lawlessness is a choice. I'm asking you not to be lawless, because what you support, you get more of. And the big question of the day is, why is ICE here in the first place? Nobody wants it. They're here to enforce the law and to keep us safe. Thank you.
Alderman Wolf, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I want to just reiterate that whenever anybody's speaking, they all deserve respect. There's going to be no comments in the audience, no sneers, no laughter, no anything else. Let everybody speak, be respectful of everybody in their position. And I'm going to request that everybody tries to abide by that very simple rule. Thank you.
Alder, and Wolf, can I also make a comment? Some people also walked in later, and I realized there was a sign up. Is it possible for those individuals to also sign up if they want to speak?
Yes, I think... Max, do you have another list? Okay, if anybody else that came in late wants to sign up, they can sign up, and they'll go on the end of the list. And one more thing. Would it be possible for us to, when we call the name, then call who's on deck? So that way, they're kind of ready.
I can do that.
That person could come up and stand and just be ready to take the place of the person.
Keep it moving.
Keep it moving.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is Matt Sperry. And then after that is Tom Fassman, I think? Is that right?
Freeman.
Freeman, okay.
Good evening. I'm Matt Sperry. I live at 1215 Fox Club Drive. I appreciate you all listening to us tonight. I know it's kind of a difficult issue to kind of go through. I am an immigration attorney. I'm also a criminal attorney and a family attorney and a child abuse neglect attorney. As a result, like this issue is kind of near and dear to me. I deal with it every day. I deal with, you know, people have to deal with law enforcement. I deal with people that have to deal with municipal services and county services. I echo a lot of Mr. Malone's concerns in terms of access. Like symbolism does matter, okay? I have clients, many of them, they're just terrified of even coming out of their homes. And I can't blame them. I mean, you turn on the news for five minutes. You hear about people getting hauled out of their cars in West Chicago. You hear about people, I've seen people get hauled out of the court up at Bridgeview, up in Cook County, just coming out of a family law case. These aren't criminals. I mean, they're just, they got numbers and they go for them. You know, one of the things that I'm kind of concerned about when I look at this and why I think you all should support this ordinance is even if you take, like, whether you're for or against immigration aside, when you look at how ICE is conducting themselves. I mean, they're masking themselves up. They're preventing themselves from being identified, doing everything they can to avoid accountability. And when you look at how they behave, I mean, you know, there's Judge Ellis up in the Northern District, who's moderating Mr. Bovino, who is the guy currently in charge of what's going on up there. Like, she's hauling them in now every day to talk about what they're doing, because they keep, you know, pepper balling people and, you know, acting inappropriately. When I look at this particular ordinance, I mean, when Mr. Malone brings up the issue of enforceability, I think that's but one issue for this body to consider. I think the other issue this body should consider is, is how involved does Batavia want to be if ICE does decide to operate out of here and ICE does decide to break the law? Do we want to be complicit with that? Do we want to be a potential pocket for somebody to go after if their rights are violated by ICE? Like, if ICE goes, you know, gets out of control here and we allow them to be here, and you don't, you know, the person who's injured, they don't know who with ICE violated their rights. Like, who are they going to turn to? They're going to turn to every deep pocket they can. And I think that includes the city. I think if you have a statement saying, like, look, we're not agreeing with what they're doing, you know, we're not going to permit them to use city property to do it. We're distancing ourselves as best we can from that particular type of liability. And I think we should. Like, I think there's certainly a place for Immigration and Customs Enforcement. I mean, that's certainly always going to be a thing. But there's a right way to do it and a wrong way to do it. And if they're not doing it the right way, and I think there's a clear argument to be made, they are not. Like, we should be running like, as far as we can from being involved with that. We should not directly be involved with that. And frankly, like, as a city, like, we shouldn't want to potentially have liability for that. The other concern I have is, and this is one of the points of Mr. Malone. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Freeman. And on deck would be Carol Dopki.
Here, City Administrator, Alders. I'm here with my wife. I'm a member of the community, 1106 Millview Drive. We own a downtown commercial business as well. And we're here to ask you to consider passing the ordinance before you. I find it kind of ironic that today is not only National Immigrant Day, but it's also National First Responder Day. I spent 45 years in local government as a fireman, being the good and the bad. Diversity and inclusion are hallmarks of the city of Batavia. Always have been, hopefully always will be. We pride ourselves on being a welcoming community. We pride ourselves on helping our neighbors. We'd like to offer that in Batavia, we empower our residents, we engage our community, and we continue to encourage the trust and cooperation that we have built in our local police department. Local law enforcement is a cornerstone to our success. In our present world of conflict today, life is too short for too many. We've heard a lot tonight about rights. I would offer you two rights, very simple. Let's do things right, and let's do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Carol Dopki, and Howard Miller will be up.
Carol Dopki, resident of Batavia, the first ward for 23 years. I am echoing the many voices here tonight and the hundreds of signatures on the petition in asking you to pass this ordinance. As you will hear in many examples, our neighbors, families, and friends are being terrorized by ICE, afraid to leave their homes, go to necessary appointments, get groceries, and take their children to school. You can make a choice to help and support our families by passing this ordinance. You can put the message of our peace bridge, a source of pride for Batavia, into action. Make the correct choice and move this ordinance forward. Thank you.
Howard Miller will be next, and then Danielle Silgar.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of the ordinance, but I'd like to talk a little bit about immigration. First came the Vikings, Spanish, French, Dutch, and British explorers of this continent, followed by the Roanoke Colony, 1585 to 1590, Jamestown Settlement, 1607, Plymouth Colony, 1620, Massachusetts Bay Colony, 1630. All were immigrants. None had visas. None were invited here. Then came the laborers from China, Italy, Ireland, and the black slaves that were brought here against their will. The vast majority of us cannot trace our ancestry to Wampanoag, Algonquin, Alini, Potawatomi, Lakota, Seminole, Aztec. My family immigrated to the United States when I was six years old. I was born in Liverpool, England. My mother had to leave London because of the bombing, and her father lived in Liverpool. If we wouldn't have stopped the Nazis, I would have gone up the chimney in smoke. But we have a great history from our forefathers of what we believed in in immigration. George Washington said, "The bosom of America is open to receive not only the opulent and the respectable stranger, but the oppressed and persecuted of all nations and religions, whom we shall welcome to a participation of all of our rights and privileges." Thomas Jefferson was noted as saying, "I was for extending the rights of suffrage, or in other words, the right of a citizen, to all who had a permanent intention of living in the country. Whoever intends to live in a country must wish that country well and has a natural right of assisting in the preservation of it." Abraham Lincoln. I should like to know if by taking this old Declaration of Independence, which declares that all men are equal upon principle, you begin making exceptions to it? Is where will it stop? If one man says it does not mean a Negro, why not another say it does not mean some other man? George H.W. Bush. Our nation is the enduring dream of every immigrant, whoever set foot on these shores, and the millions still struggling to be free.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Silgar, and then James Curtis is next.
Hi, I'm Danielle Sliker. Apologize if my voice is a little shaky. This is something that's really close to me. I'm a Latina, and I proudly come from a family of immigrants, not aliens, but hardworking, loving, worthy people. And so I also come to you today as a very concerned citizen, and I am in support of an ICE-free ordinance. Because of the community in Batavia and the surrounding suburbs I share space with, I can tell you that our community has already experienced so much fear and harm. We have 685 signatures confirming the same feelings. I'm part of Batavia Community Diversity Initiative leadership. This petition was not our initiative, but we heard a need to help elevate our community's voices. The petition in support of an ICE-free ordinance that was sent to you represents 685 separate emails. I just want to stress that. Signatures, each signature is, should be taken as a separate email. It's a lot of support. You have 685 vocal constituents who support ICE-free zones. These constituents were willing to put their names behind an action regardless of the fear it comes with. I need it to be understood that for the 685 signatures, there are hundreds and hundreds of other constituents that are in full support but didn't sign, not because they don't believe in this, not because they aren't watching this meeting and the actions that you're going to take, but because of what this petition speaks to, the fear. The fear of retaliation of an agency that has been showing up in our communities, threatening and harming its community members unprovoked and unlawfully. BCDI is a nonpartisan organization. The need for the protection and statement that an ordinance like this offers doesn't stop at our immigrant community members. The violence and force we have seen in our area doesn't care about your political affiliation, your age, your class, or your race, or your immigration status. It doesn't care if you've done things the right way. We're not asking you to somehow understand something that may not be your experience, but we are asking that you believe here and trust your constituents who are asking for your help. Thank you.
James Curtis is next, and then next after that will be Ryan Hatfield.
Evening, Council. I'm going to cut to the chase and appeal to your sense of history. Batavia has faced a similar question to what's before us right now in its past, and I'm encouraging you to support this ordinance. In August 1835, 14 pioneers gathered at Thompson Paxton's cabin to establish the Church of the Big and Little Woods, the first organized religious denomination in Kane County. In July 1842, concerned citizens met at what is today the Congregational Church of Batavia to form the Kane County Anti-Slavery Society. And in late 1843, church membership formally affirmed its anti-slavery doctrine by reorganizing as the Congregational Church and Society of Batavia, straight from the Batavia Historical Society. Throughout the 1840s and 50s, these abolitionists, ministers, farmers, and everyday citizens provided shelter, food, and protection, freedom seekers traveling the Underground Railroad through the Fox River Valley. Last week, our neighbors in Yorkville dedicated an Illinois State Historical marker at Chapel on the Green, honoring that community's parallel role in the abolitionist movement, an event in which speakers, including sitting U.S. Representative Lauren Underwood and Illinois Historical Society Executive Director Bill Furry underscored the connection between the anti-slavery abolitionist movement of the 19th century and the organized resistance against ICE's unjust, unconstitutional activities throughout Chicagoland in the current day. 183 years ago, Batavians like you and I chose courage over complicity. They recognized that silence in the face of injustice makes us accomplices to it, that in fact, the cost of complicity is greater in the long run than the risk of resistance. That same choice stands before you all tonight. Supporting an ordinance prohibiting ICE from Batavia's public grounds is both practical and principled. Welcoming communities strengthens our local economy and enrich our civic life. When residents and visitors to our community, regardless of their citizenship status, live in fear of being detained while taking their children to school or shopping for groceries, our entire community suffers. And one day, God willing, this will all be over and such an ordinance will no longer be necessary. I urge this council to demonstrate that Batavia remains what it always been, a city that stands on the right side of history. Our abolitionist ancestors understood that our neighbors' freedom is inseparable from our own. Let us honor their legacy by taking this essential step to protect all Batavians and visitors to this community. Thank you for your time.
Ryan Hatfield, and next up would be Anna Clark.
Hi, Ryan Hatfield, 1139 Wintergreen Terrace. I speak before you tonight to ask you to support passing this ordinance. One of the first things I wanted to do is just point out some facts that I think we should consider tonight when we're discussing this. When I first came in this evening, I heard lots of discussion about our downtown businesses, utilization, the things that make Batavia a wonderful place to live. I would argue that that should be the focus of city government. That should be what we should be turning our attention to. The focus should not be on assisting a federal agency that's responsible for administering federal law. We talk about separation and getting back to what the core of our organization, our town, should be. My parents, when I was a child, often would tell me, you know, who you choose to associate with speaks about your character. The things that they do, their actions, are a reflection on you. So when we talk about enforceability of this, I think there's a couple of things to consider. First is, we should not be aligning ourselves with an organization that is denying due process, that is not providing warrants, that is masked and avoiding accountability. That's not who we should be aligning ourselves with. The other side of the enforceability is, it doesn't matter if we can stop them in the moment. It gives us legal protection. We are in a representative democracy, and someday, even if this administration is not going to hold them accountable, the next one may. And as it was pointed out, we may have some legal liability if we welcome these people into our community and allow them to use our public facilities to stage these operations and to act lawlessly. I would also argue that ICE isn't operating on good faith, and the way that they're operating and the lawlessness that they would bring would be bad for our community as well. I think when we talk about politically, I think we can all agree, you know, we are talking with this ordinance about civil, not criminal. I think regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, we can all agree that if people are here committing crimes, if there's evidence, if there's things that would point to that, that certainly those people should be sought after and apprehended. But we're talking about people that are here on what amounts to a misdemeanor, you know, and not supporting and not bringing that chaos into our city. It was said earlier that lawlessness is a choice. I believe that's correct, and I believe that inviting by not passing this ordinance a lawless organization in would just bring chaos to the community, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Anna Clark is next, and then Kimberly Hansen.
Hi, my name's Kena, and I'm from Ward 5. I would like to say that there is no reason for federal officials to use local public land for immigration enforcement. I support the ordinance. Batavia's women-friendly, we have a lot of thriving businesses. It's hard to foster a thriving business environment when your neighbors are scared to frequent said businesses, because they are scared somebody will get them, because they don't look the way that certain people think that American citizens should look. I don't want ICE in my community. I don't want them attacking my neighbors. I don't want them flying helicopters over our buildings. I don't want them in my library parking lot. I don't want them near my schools. And I think that what we're doing by passing an ordinance, if that's what this board does, is a very good idea that will protect everybody who lives here and also help us continue to grow a thriving business street. Thank you.
Kimberly Hansen, and then...
I have left.
Oh, she may have left. Okay. I think Sheri Jones-Doss is next. You here? After that will be Kate Cunio. Yeah, we have one more call. If we're going to have anybody else sign up, if not, we're going to cut it off at that sheet.
My name is Sheri Jones-Doss. I've lived in Ward 2 for about 32 years now, I guess. It's the longest place I've ever lived, is in Batavia. And I am asking that you support the ordinance. I'm not going to go through everything everybody else has said about ICE's inhumanity and violence. I also believe that Batavia is an inclusive community. I really like Batavia, and I think we need to be on the right side of history in this. What I really want to tell you, though, if I can do it without crying, is how scared my children are. And they're adults. When I came to Batavia 32 years ago, my husband and I had two children we adopted internationally. They are U.S. citizens. They are carrying their passports with them because they are so afraid of being detained, particularly my daughter, who looks Mexican. She's not, but they both have dark skin, and our Supreme Court has said you can stop people for looking that way or speaking a different language, and they are afraid. My daughter's work, she works out here, but they had a conference in Chicago. She was afraid to go. And I, her coworkers couldn't understand it. They hadn't thought about it. They hadn't thought about how people who are not white are afraid. And I don't think my children, who have gone through the Batavia School District, who have gone, graduated from Batavia High School, I don't think they should be afraid in our community. So that's why I'm asking you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
That would be Kate Cunio, and then on deck is Richard Clark.
Hi, I'm Kate Cunio. I'm a mother of three kids in Batavia Public Schools. I live in Ward 6. I just want to thank you and all of your attention for all these speakers tonight. I am another person that supports this ordinance. I hope you pass it, and you've heard some great, incredibly great points from people in the crowd, so just I'm hoping you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Richard Clark, and on deck is Sid Gadecki.
Similarly, a lot of people have said a lot of great things that I want to reinforce. I appreciate Alderman Malone's introduction to the discussion. I have been thinking a lot about belonging and its relation to law and order. I think a lot of times we pit ourselves on one against each other, one end or the other. And the thing that I've realized is that law and order exist for a purpose, and the purpose is to allow for human flourishing and to allow for a sense of belonging. There was some discussion around who do we find expertise from on these things? And my thing is that the people that I've seen modeling law and order are here in this room and in the other building. There are people here locally. We have people violating the law in various ways that have come into Chicago, that have now come into Chicagoland, and it is creating an atmosphere that does not allow for human flourishing, in all of the ways we've heard tonight. This applies for those on the margins, but it also applies to the rest of us. These fears that people are talking about might feel silly to some of us until it's happening to us, until it's happening to our community. The thing that I know is that Batavia prides itself on having a sense of welcoming, on being a place of belonging, on being a place of inclusion. And I know there's some discussion and some, you know, hesitancy around, can we actually make this happen? Can we do this? Is this something that's going to stir up too much trouble? And I think one quote that came to mind is something from, I think it's Tom Snyder, Timothy Snyder's on tyranny, which, take or leave the title, I don't want to speak to whether something is tyranny, but I thought that the quote was really valid, which is, "Do not obey in advance." Whether or not this is enforceable is not the point. We want to make it something that we are saying, that can be violated or not, and then we can cross that bridge when we get there. But if we don't do that, we are obeying in advance. The ultimate question I think we're asking is, are we going to be willing to stand up for and protect the values that Batavia prides itself on?
Next up is Sid Gadecki. Did I get the name right? Close enough? Okay. And then on deck will be Kathleen Reeve.
Good evening. My name is Sid Gadkari. I'm resident of the sixth ward. Don't have anything prepared. I do want to say thank you, Mr. Malone, for your comments earlier. I do support the ordinance, and I hope you will too. I'm the father of two young children, eight and six, over Wood Elementary School. My wife is an immigrant. The fact that I have to say this is ridiculous. Yes, she came to the country legally. I am first generation. My parents immigrated in '75. I'm not a particularly paranoid person, but I do worry now. Do I need to carry my passport? Does my wife need to carry her passport? Are my kids going to be unfairly targeted because of the way we look? Because I look like... Because I look like this, my wife is Asian, my kids look something like this. There's no reason I should have to think about this. If I choose to go to a different city, like I work in downtown Chicago, and thankfully it's as safe as they can make it. But if they didn't take the steps that they have taken, if I choose to go downtown Chicago and I'm unfairly targeted, that's one thing. I should not have to worry about being unfairly targeted where I live. So thank you very much for your time. Please support the ordinance.
Kathleen Reif. And then on deck is Renner Barcella.
Hello, my name's Kathleen Reif. I have been with my spouse and son, a resident of the Woodlands for seven years now. And I'm nervous to stand here today, but I opted to speak because I realized that my nervousness is nothing compared to the fear that some of my friends have voiced to me. And I'd like to share a real story or two as a counter to any thought that this is all happening with due process because I have a friend who has very much experienced something different than that. She is a, she lives in our county. She is a resident. She has a green card for our country. She has, she owns a business and she is a third generation business owner with customers in Batavia, with employees who live in Batavia. And she was born in Mexico. And she has had people at her door at all hours of the night for no reason whatsoever than somebody said they should go check on, check her out. This has happened multiple nights in a row at 4:00 AM. And she has now, for the safety of her children, she now has included on her in case of emergency sign on her refrigerator, an immigration lawyer that can be contacted because it's not enough anymore to be prepared for, you know, somebody being in a car accident. Something that's completely preventable and inexcusable could take this mother away from her children. And she needs to be prepared and prepare her children for that. Beyond that, her business is suffering for related reasons. I'd also like to share that personally, as someone who looks like this, my life is a lot easier, I think, based on what I've heard from them, uh, from these friends. And most recently on Monday, I dialed 911 for a situation. I am the daughter of first responders. I have a tremendous amount of respect for law enforcement, for fire department members, for paramedics, all of that. I called 911 because there were two adult sons physically and verbally arguing with one another where their mother had pulled off on the side of the road near where my mother lived. And this small woman was trying to navigate her two adult children. I called 911 in protection of her. And then I realized later that because they didn't look like me, that I might have done exactly the wrong thing. So like our alderman said, people are making decisions that impact all of us because of the fear of others.
Uh, Renner Barcella. And then on deck is Brian Murphy.
Hi, my name is Renner Barcella. I live just across the river. Um, and it sounds like I'm in the vast majority, so I will spare you the speech. Trust me, it was very good. I support this ordinance and I hope that you vote the right way. Thank you.
Brian Murphy, and then on deck is Kerry Ashenbach.
Good evening. I'm Brian Murphy at 1060 Pontiac Drive, also speaking on behalf of my daughter, Emma, who's with us in the audience. To the point of the proposed Batavia ordinance. Our Batavia prides itself and continually and actively positions and promotes itself as a diverse, eclectic and welcoming community. This was a key reason that our family moved to and has lived in Batavia for over 21 years. These are our core strengths as a community and attraction to residents, visitors and businesses alike. As has been said many times over the evening, a prominent visual example of this is our peace on earth sign, wonderfully unique for any type of community, especially ours. This proposed welcoming ordinance legally and symbolically encapsulates these notions. Most significantly, it will act to address a threat to our community. We have residents and workers and visitors to our community who are fearful, feel threatened by forces which are largely beyond their control. A community government's primary responsibility is to provide a place to live, work and visit without undue or unreasonable fear. This applies to both people and businesses. The proposed ordinances embodies this philosophy. To do nothing about the duty, about the distress and fear facing our community and neighbors within is a dereliction of duty. This ordinance will help to address the stress and fear of our population and reaffirms Batavia's commitment to our core values, which we are so, which are so vital to the continued happiness, growth and prosperity for all of Batavia. For the sake of our community, I encourage the council to adopt this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Kerry Ashenbach next. And then, uh, Kylie Peters is.
Hi, uh, excuse me. Hi, I'm Kerry Ashenbach of the Fourth Ward. Um, just wanted to thank Alderman Malone for your comments and say you said it better than I could, and I support the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, Kylie Peters, and next would be Sharon Riggel.
Hi, I'm Kylie Peters, First Ward. The debate about whether Batavia should give shelter to ICE should be settable in three words. Have some empathy. But I am learning that many of my neighbors are immune to this argument and it makes me sick with sadness. Prove me wrong. Prove that empathy is still alive in Batavia. It's the spirit that moved our ancestors to make this a stop on the Underground Railroad, which by the way, was illegal under the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850. I have heard Mayor Shilky speak with pride about this illustrious history on several occasions, as he should. We should celebrate it. Um, but we have no right to invoke our history of righteous dissidents with pride while in 2025, we throw our Brown community members under the bus. 160-year-old karma is a little stale. Every person deserves dignity. Every person deserves due process. I believe this even about criminals, but I especially believe it about people who were desperate and their only crime was to cross a border just for a shot at living in health and safety with their families. Batavia, we have been on the right side of history before. We have broken with federal law in support of human dignity. My heart is breaking seeing what has become of us. Protect our people, make our forefathers and foremothers of Batavia proud. Thank you.
Sharon Riggel. And next after that is Barbara Little.
Hi there. Thank you. For this opportunity to, to, for us all to speak and that you're opening the list and letting us all speak, it's important. And it's important too that those that don't agree with the ordinance also have a voice. I think this is, I'm proud to be a Batavian, uh, tonight, especially after everything I've heard. I bought a house here four and a half years ago, but I've only been really living here full-time this year. And have gotten very involved in the community. So I know there are a lot of like-minded folks here. Excuse me. And I just wanted to share three short points with you tonight. Um, after also, sorry, Alderman Malone, you really, the, the grandstanding or whatever it was, was right on point and you really articulated a lot of what we're, um, I've been thinking and also the immigration lawyer, Matt Berry, I think, the, the liability issue. I've, I've tried to strip away some of the politics and some of the really deep emotion I have about this to get to some things that are, you know, most relevant. Excuse me. Um, I said I just, I moved here. Well, I've, I've moved here after, um, uh, I've been an immigrant eight times. Um, and I have moved here, having lived in war zones and conflict zones. And I have been unbelievably shocked and appalled to see what is evolving in this country and how it's coming home to us here in Batavia. I was, I've never been treated like that. There, there was never a threat in any countries I've lived in, um, to have that, these tactics used on me. Um, these tactics that we're seeing, and I think it's been articulated by others as well. These are the same ones that we see employed by authoritarian regimes around the world. Um, that really scares me. And so we have an opportunity here, clearly I'm in favor of the ordinance, um, to, to stem that tide and to contribute to stopping that because rule of law is everything. And we have to ensure that at every juncture, we reinforce the rights of every person present in this country and to contradict the other speaker, all of whom are protected by the Constitution, every person present in this country. Um, second, the tactics, I won't go into that, but they are intentionally designed to intimidate and terrorize and oppress our community members. That is, uh, we're, it's hard to separate out the legal from the intent, but I think the term dignity that we heard early comes into it as much as rule of law. We know this is not about crime. We know this is a purge by any means necessary. It comes, runs counter to everything we support in a rights-based democracy and is not welcome here. Our tax dollars, uh, to remind, tax dollars, oh, already, okay, sorry. I, as my friends here will know, I, I do, I, I can talk for a long time. I just wanted to, I'll just make this one last point on tax dollars. Our tax dollars go to pay for these public spaces and so do those of our immigrant neighbors and friends. And many of them never get that money back. They pay into social security and that. So, um, everything else will put in writing. Thank you.
Barbara Little next, and then James McGinty.
Hello, my name is Barbara Little, um, and I am a recent resident of Batavia. Until about seven months ago, um, I've been living in the city of Chicago for about 20 years. I want to tell you a little bit about what is happening in my home during Operation Midway Blitz. About a month ago, I woke up to my phone going off. My neighbor had been, had been tear gassed by ICE agents, my local grocery store, not three blocks away from where I was living, was attacked by tear gas, um, with little, no provocation. My friends and, um, family members back there were sending me videos of tear gas flooding the streets, um, my local grocery store that I shopped at. People screaming, people covering their faces, people running. Their target was Spunston Elementary School, where was my previous polling place where I participated in elections in my civic process in the city of Chicago. A three-year-old had to be hospitalized that day from effects of the tear gas. At that time, which was about a month ago, it was the beginning of all of this. We thought this would be in, you know, an isolated incident, right? Since then, almost every day I wake up to a new tear gas attack in a neighborhood in residential Chicago. These are not bad neighborhoods. These are not neighborhoods filled with criminals or even poverty. Wrigleyville this past week, at the Laugh Factory, was tear gassed. The administration has made it known that this model of law and order is very much what they intend for cities across the country, not just Chicago. We cannot allow this to happen here in Batavia. Some comments have been made earlier that ICE is only targeting criminals. Many of us know this not to be true. But I want to self-blask ourselves. What is the price of the collateral damage? What amount of collateral damage are we willing to pick up? In these raids, in these tear gas attacks, ICE has detained maybe one or two individuals violently with all the citizens watching, with children watching. This past Friday, it was in Irving Park at a children's trick-or-treat parade. Every child out there had watched this happen. I ask city council to pass this ordinance and I thank you all for your time tonight.
James McGinty next, and then Sarah Satina.
Hi, uh, James McGinty, living in 234 East Wilson. Local artist, been working in the community, been participating in the arts community in Batavia Aurora, et cetera, for decades, but specifically here for several years. Um, and we've heard a lot of stuff. Uh, I have a, a quote that I want to read. Um, terrible things are happening outside. At any time of night and day, poor helpless people are being dragged out of their home. They're allowed to take only knapsack and what little cash they have with them. And even then, they're robbed of these possessions on the way. Families are torn apart. Men, women, children are separated. Children come, come home from school to find their parents have disappeared. Women return from shopping, find their houses sealed, families gone. Diary of Anne Frank. We need to look at ourselves in 10 years and say that what we did was against what's happening. I support this resolution.
Sarah Satina. And then on deck would be Matt Benning.
Good evening, council. My name is Sarah Satina, 909 Ekman Drive. I am a nurse practitioner, certified nurse midwife, a mother and a proud resident of Batavia community. In fact, since moving here, I've made sure to remind everyone in my life that Batavia is the best place on earth. The sense of belonging that, um, someone else spoke to, it is really strong here. And as a healthcare provider for the last 15 years, I've seen firsthand how the fear of deportation prevents families from seeking medical care, reporting crimes, accessing basic services that keep our whole community healthy and safe. And when local communities and governments cooperate with ICE, it erodes that trust and not just for immigrants. Okay, if all of residents who believe that our local government should protect, not endanger its people and communities as a whole. So I am here to obviously voice my strong support for the ICE free ordinance. Um, it's not just the right thing to do, but it is the smart thing and it is the Batavia thing to do. Cities with policies that have limited ICE cooperation have seen stronger relationships between their residents and law enforcement, improved public health outcomes and more stable families and neighborhoods. As a science-minded person, I always follow the evidence. And the evidence is pretty clear. The policies that limit this actually make community safer. Uh, there was an analysis in 2017, in case you like data, um, like I do. Those cities that had sanctuary jurisdictions, ones that basically limited participation with ICE, um, what we're asking for tonight, uh, they had 35 fewer crimes per 10,000 residents compared to non-sanctuary areas. They also had higher median household incomes, lower poverty rate and lower unemployment rate. Other studies show that improved public health outcomes, including greater trust in their healthcare and law enforcement and even measurable gains in mental health, specifically for our Latinx communities, um, when they're not living in constant fear. Imagine that. Um, so I urge you to support an ICE-free Batavia, to stand for the values that make this town a place that we're all proud to call home. Um, so I can continue, uh, bragging about it. Thank you.
Matt Benning, and then on deck, Prada McKenna.
Hello, I'm Matt Benning and I'm from Ward, um, I don't know what ward I'm from. There's a little joke for you guys, lighten the mood. Uh, no, so I, I moved here three months ago. I, I have no idea what ward I'm from. I have to ask my girlfriend. She asked me to move in with her a while ago and I lived in Hoffman Estates and I pretty immediately said, yeah, absolutely. They've got the best gym on the Fox River, so I gotta go there. Um, I'm a teacher. I teach finance at Northern Illinois University. Got about 300 students this semester. We have ICE in DeKalb, not on campus yet at NIU, but we do have ICE, uh, in DeKalb. I cannot give you guys statistics, but I can give you two anecdotal pieces of just evidence that I have. Uh, my students, brown or white, are scared. They're either scared for themselves or they're scared for their friends. for themselves, or they're scared for their friends, whether they are undocumented, whether they aren't undocumented, whether their parents are, whether they aren't. This does not bode well for the classroom. I know that from experience. I know that from experiencing the last couple of months at NIU. Just doesn't. When they're distracted and they are scared, they show up less, they are paying attention less, and it doesn't matter, they're scared. My cousin works in Carpenter'sville Middle School, and ICE is in Carpenter'sville at this point. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. And she's seen about a 20% drop in attendance in her classes in general. That's not college students, that's 12-year-olds not showing up to class. I'm not saying they're all undocumented, or their parents are, or anything like that. I'm saying that is 20% less students showing up to class, 7th grade. Earlier today, somebody mentioned that we're really proud of Batavia School District. I've heard a lot of really good things. I plan on raising children here. You lose 20% of your students showing up, that does not bode well for education. It does not bode well for our town. And that wouldn't really be, that's not the place that I wanted to move to. I moved to Batavia because of things exactly like this ordinance. So if it wasn't clear, I support this ordinance, and it's, should be pretty clear that all of you should support this ordinance as well. Thank you.
Prada, next, excuse me, and Ryan O'Connell is on deck.
Prada McKenna, I've been a resident in Ward 5, lovely Ward 5, for over 30 years. And I'm here to support the welcoming ordinance. I am a welcoming person. I support the businesses that welcome those, the organizations. I have volunteered for them. I've been a part of this community because it is a true community, a community that will put up a wooden peace on our sign until we raise the money and have the fortitude to put up the permanent peace on our sign. And I encourage you and I implore you to keep this community welcoming by supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Ryan O'Connell, and then Luna Nino.
Hi, Ryan O'Connell. I'd like to briefly talk about who we invite into our community and what people hide behind. It's up to us who we invite into our community. For ICE, silence is an invitation. This is not just about immigration. ICE is arresting and detaining and harassing American citizens. They're following young schoolchildren on bicycles. They're injuring the elderly. And while they do that, they hide. They hide behind masks, flags, and laws. Masks are for today and tomorrow, to avoid the consequences, repercussions that will eventually happen. They hide behind flags, American flags strapped to their chests. Will they arrest tear gas and shoot at fellow Americans? And they hide behind laws. They hide behind saying federal laws supersede state laws, city laws. But they ignore the Constitution. They ignore Fourth, Fifth, Fourteenth. They ignore the rights of unreasonable searches and seizures, due process, and equal protection, and freedom from discrimination. True constitutionalists would be very alarmed. While ICE hides, it's time to be brave. And there are a lot of brave people in this room and in Batavia. I'm pro the ordinance.
Luna Nino, and then Karine Calhan.
Hello. Thank you, Alderman Malone, for presenting this ordinance to the floor here to be approved. I am supporting it. I am an immigrant. I've been in the States for 32 years, 31 years. I feel that the federal government in their doings are creating a healthcare crisis. Being in fear 24 hours is really bad for your health. And if someone is in fear next to you, guess what? You're gonna be in fear. And I do have very white friends with a lot of generations of their family here, and they're fearful. And they're very worried about taking their phone to public demonstrations against the doings of the federal government. So this is a public crisis. I do have a dream to have a government or be governed by master government, by a government that cares about real existential crises, such as the environment, such as the technology making our youth and elder and everybody, to tell you the truth, addicted to opioids, you name it. There are many existential crises that are bigger than that, than immigrants that are not criminal. And these are the people that I am supporting, immigrants that are not criminal. And the way you are stating your ordinance is very clear, and I support it. And I did say that I support a master government, because I would like to read this from the Tao Te Ching. "When the master governs, the people are hardly aware that he exists. Next best is the leader who is loved. Next, one who is feared. And the worst is one who is despised. If you don't trust people, you make them untrustworthy. The master doesn't talk, he acts. When his work is done, the people say, amazing, we did it all ourselves." Thank you.
Karine Calhan, and then on deck is Bill McGrath.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this issue. My name is Karina. I am a proud resident of Ward 3 in Batavia, and I just want to say a quick something about legacy. Part of what drew me to Batavia, part of what drew me to Batavia in 2020 to buy my very first home, was the legacy of this town. The support of marginalized communities, the support of neighbors, rich and poor, successful and struggling, regardless of what they looked like. This has always been a place where people could feel welcome. Building legacy is hard. It's hard work. It's easy to look back at the decisions that were made in years past and say, this is who we are. Look at this, we did this, right? Like, it's easy to look back at decisions of the past, but it was hard in the moment for those people to make those decisions. It was hard to stand up to the status quo and say, we would be something different. So I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance and for our neighbors who need that support and need us to be brave and need us to take those steps towards continuing the legacy that is Batavia. Thank you.
Bill McGrath, and then on deck is Missy Hearn.
Hey, my name is Bill McGrath, 407 Allen Street. I've lived here over 40 years. I've known undocumented immigrants who have been here since the age of seven, were brought here not knowing what was going on, but brought here. I've seen them raise beautiful children because they respected our school district. They worked themselves doing jobs that we wouldn't do to keep their kids in our school district. These are scattered thoughts. I always used to think of the downtown as the heart of Batavia. And this, with all our fellow community people here, this is the heart of the heart. There's just no question about this ordinance. It's not a question. Unfortunately for you, you've given me the chance to share anger. My anger is that we continue to elect people who for 40 years have been unable to come up with a plan, like it or not, for immigration. Nobody's come up with a plan to say, you know what, let's take 10 years. First five years, felons. While we're doing that, we're gonna talk about what happens in the next five years. You know, what is the rush? The rush is power and cruelty, and that's what gets me the most. It's the cruelty, which is so opposite of human dignity and the pursuit of happiness. And I see a leader who likes to do things when his sycophants tell him that these things will make him look powerful, and he says, hey, okay, because I'll look powerful. I think they're hiring people who have no class and are into power. And I think that passing this ordinance at least says that Batavia will not answer just to power. You know, we need to think and talk about things. That's it. Thanks.
Missy Hem, I got that right. And then on deck is John Dryden.
Hello, my name is Missy Hem. I have a whole thing written out, and I'm actually gonna skip most of it because of how well everyone has spoken this evening and addressed a lot of my concerns. But I am a social worker, and I own a therapy practice here in downtown Batavia. And it's part of my professional code of ethics to speak up for oppressed groups and at-risk communities, and to advocate for people at the community and the national level, and that's why I'm here tonight. But in my personal life, I'm a Batavia resident. I live on the east side. I'm a mom. My first grader attends a Batavia elementary school, and my husband and I are homeowners and voters. My husband's family is from Cambodia, which is a small country in Southeast Asia. His parents came here as refugees in the late 70s, early 80s, and settled in Wheaton with the help of World Relief, who spoke at a recent meeting. And the reason that I bring that up is because both my husband and my daughter look Cambodian. They have brown skin. And while they were born here, and they are US citizens, they are at risk of being targeted by ICE. People are terrified, as evidenced by stories shared here tonight. And I'm terrified that my family will be impacted as well, and that one day my partner might not come home from work. My husband now carries his social security card with him every time he leaves the house. He prefers that I drive when we go places. We have discussed and strongly considered leaving the country due to the alarming developments and the direction that we're headed in. Anything that Batavia can do to reassure and build trust with the community is essential at this time. I have no desire to leave this place. I love this community. And I did want to share some data with you all, which I'm a numbers person. So as of 2023, 5.7% of Batavia residents were born outside the United States. That's about 1,500 people. Of those 1,500, 33% originate in Latin America, 29% from Europe, and 26% from Asia. In our town of 26,500 people, about 8.6 folks are Hispanic or Latino, which is about 2,200 people. And then if we look more broadly, as ICE is doing, and look at those who are non-white people in our town, that's 16%, as many as 4,200 people. So for any of these folks who are faced with the credible threat of detainment, this is what's happening. People are staying home. That means potentially missing work, at best missing out on wages, at worst jeopardizing their employment. I've heard reports of people erring on the side of caution and not taking their children to doctor's appointments and necessary therapies, like early intervention. Some people feel unsafe walking their children to school or meeting them at the bus stop. And then what I most wanted to share with you today, which is something that kind of stopped me in my track, I think is one of the largest issues facing us during this time, is that I spoke with an administrator at the Northern Illinois Food Bank today, and she shared with me that across their 13-county service area, they're seeing a 23% decrease in neighbors identifying as Hispanic and Latino coming to the food pantry for services. People are going hungry because they're afraid to leave their homes. And while undocumented immigrants are not eligible for food stamps or SNAP benefits, other impacted people are, and that is only going to compound the issue when those benefits lap on November 1st. Lastly, I just wanted to note that there is a financial impact on the entire town and the economy when people who are at risk are not leaving their homes, and they're not shopping at businesses, they're not going to restaurants. And I think, you know, obviously I'm in support of the ICE re-ordinance, but ICE is at our back door. They have a strong presence in Aurora. They were at Rush Copley Hospital over the weekend, as well as ongoing efforts against people in Elgin and West Chicago. You know, the direct impact of this proposed ordinance would be to minimize interactions between Batavians and ICE officers during enforcement, and to prevent any unnecessary trauma and detainment within a detention facility or family separation. Please be proactive, and thank you for your time.
Dryden, and Katana Merkel, next.
Hello all, John Dryden, 311 Lake Street. I've been living here forever. Thanks for listening to us. I know you're tired. I used to be a high school teacher here, tired about 23 years, and I want to tell you real quick a story that I used to tell my students that made them extremely happy. A few other folks here tonight, James and some others, have talked about the Kane County abolitionist society back in the day. But there's a story I want to share with you. In the 1850s, the federal government, run by slave-owned Democrats, thought it'd be a really good idea to pass something called the Fugitive Slave Act. You've probably heard of it. What it did was it required every able-bodied citizen to actively assist slave catchers who would come to any territory in the United States. So you would, as a citizen, have to help the equivalency of ICE in those days round up any black person that they thought might be a runaway slave. Well, the good folks of Batavia, with the good folks of Elgin and Aurora and a few other places in this Kane County abolitionist society, decided that just wasn't gonna stand. So, they did two things. One, they formed vigilante squads to chase down the slave catchers when they came to Kane County. The second thing they did was they took out full-page newspaper ads and newspapers in New York City and Washington DC that said this. If a runaway slave makes it to Kane County, Illinois, we're gonna make that runaway slave as safe as Canada. Openly defied federal law. There were African-American families living here, former slaves, who freed themselves, living here on North River Street openly in defiance of federal law, protected by this entire town. Safe as Canada. Now, I'm not asking you to defy federal law, but I would ask you to have the moral courage to do what we've always done. That's us. That's this town. That's who we are. We can stand up here and say, we can be a safe space. We can be a community that protects each other because that's what we've always done. Thanks for your time.
Katana Merkel, and then on deck is Elizabeth Schullenberg.
Hi, I'm Katana Merkel-Stokely. I have lived in Batavia for only a short time personally, but my family has lived here for 106 years. They were the first black family to own property in Batavia. And that's a big deal for my family to have found a safe space like Batavia. There were so many cities that my grandfather could not pass through. He worked in Chicago, and if he missed his train after a certain hour, he couldn't catch the next one because of all the sundown towns between here and Chicago. Batavia being safe has been such a big part of my family's history, and I would like to continue to be. I am multi-ethnic, and that means my siblings and I, and my parents, and my mom, and my uncle, we all look racially ambiguous. My siblings have been mistaken for Hispanic. My uncle has been mistaken for Hispanic. I would like them to feel safe in Batavia. I go to Wobunzi Community College, and my... I go to Wobunzi Community College, and my fellow students are being harassed as they walk to and from their cars. It's about a block walk, and ICE has, I've seen ICE harassing my fellow students, asking for identification. And while they legally don't have to give it, they do it because they are scared. My, these fellow 16-to-30-year-olds are carrying passports and social security cards just so that they can make it to their car and make it to class. So many students have been not attending class. My classes have have because people are not coming to class. And I am scared for the day that ICE comes to Batavia. Thank you.
Next is Elizabeth Schullenberg, and then Elizabeth Reuter.
Hey, I'm Elizabeth Schullenberg. I live in Ward 2, so I think Leah is my alderman and also Mr. Wolf Allen. It's probably a surprise that you see Schullenberg and I show up, but I am 100% Mexican. My parents are both immigrants. I've lived in Batavia for about 12 years. My husband's lived here for about 20 years. We have five kids between us. We're a blended family. We have custody of all of our children. We have a 18-year-old who's a senior at Batavia High School, a 15-year-old who's a sophomore at Batavia High School, a 13-year-old who's in eighth grade at Rotolo, and my first grader who's seven years old. I work full-time. I wrote down my notes because it's just been a long day. And I also have a vendor booth at Red Hive Market, near and dear to my heart. So I am proud to be not only a resident of Batavia, but also supporting small businesses where I can in Batavia as well. It has never been easy to be brown in this country. I'm just going to be open and honest and frank with you. You know, I, when I was 16 years old, was spat on and called a spig in a mall parking lot. And as much as my father wanted to defend me, I knew there was really nothing that he could do because ultimately, when the police showed up, it would be our word against his word, the offender. I've been asked how it feels to be in law school because of affirmative action. And I, in court, when I was litigating in family court in Kane County, I was also a conflict attorney for the 16th Judicial Circuit for over a decade. I was several times told to sit down where the defendants sit and also that the court interpreters usually sit over there as a litigator, as a licensed attorney of the state of Illinois. This, for me, is the hardest time being brown in this country right now. And it might be for two reasons, just because everything that's going on with immigration and having to still go to corporate America and do my job and put that side, put that aside, and then also being a parent, because it's not easy to explain to your kids what's going on. I don't know what's going on myself, so I don't know how to explain it to my kids. But I am asked, I, you said something when you started this session about citizens should be treated with dignity. And I can honestly tell you, growing up as brown in this country, I've never had an expectation of being treated with dignity, ever. I don't expect that. I don't feel like I'm entitled to it. I've kind of been raised to feel like I'm lucky to be here. And I'm asking you to pass this ordinance for three reasons. The first reason is my father, who lives with us in Batavia. We had moved my, him in with my mother about five, no, four years ago. He has dementia. He's 76 years old. He has dementia, and I am terrified that he's going to wander away from our house and he's not going to be able to be responsive to ICE, and he's not going to be able to even communicate with us as to where he was taken. That is a reality. That is my everyday reality and that, you know, is, is, is very near and dear to my heart. The second reason is my first grader, my seven-year-old. He goes to Alice Gustafson School, and he came home last week and said, Mom, I'm really scared that the police are going to take you because you're brown, and they're going to take Grandma and Grandpa because they're brown. And I don't know how to explain that to him. I want to be able to tell him, don't worry, Batavia's got our back. No matter what, this is a safe place. They're not going to welcome ICE here. And look for the police officers, look for law enforcement, they will help you. And the last reason is, I know this is symbolic. I absolutely understand that. I'm an attorney. I understand that there's nothing really that this ordinance is going to do, other than symbolism of a safe place. But if there's anything that my local government can do to pass something that symbolically will make people like me feel a little bit safer in, honestly, like, one of the most helpless times in this country, I ask that you do that. And to all of the white people here on the panel who are allies, and to all of you in the audience who are here tonight, spending your Tuesday night here, I just want to say thank you for being allies, truly. It is really hard to know who your allies are right now, and it means so much that you're sticking up for the minorities when you really have no horse in the race, other than to be a good human being right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Reuter, and then Spencer Dario.
Hi, Elizabeth Reuter, 411 Manchester Avenue. I support the ordinance and I support the establishment of safe spaces. Thank you.
Just give me the pronunciation on your name so I can get it right. Sorry, Demisho. My handwriting is terrible.
Okay, you'll be a doctor.
All right, I'm a 14-year-old. I am an eighth grader at Rotolo Middle School, and I'm just coming here to kind of present like my point of view on this. I am obviously pro-ordinance, and I am honestly very terrified for, not for myself, I'm white. I'm terrified for my friends because I fear that they will have to go home to a parentless home. I fear that their grandparents, parents, or even they could be taken. It, it terrifies me that this is a possibility, and I find it just appalling that this could happen in a nation built on freedom. So then I want to build off this. As seen in some footage, we've seen first responders also tear gassed by ICE. So I want to bring that up. If we allow ICE into our communities, this could be a major issue, not only to, towards the immigrants, but towards our first responders themselves. I know we have a police officer present here, sheriff maybe, but this could be a major issue towards our law enforcement or any other first responders. So when we are discussing this ordinance, we must take that into account. First and foremost, this is about immigrants and our immigrant community, but this is also about the average people here and our first responders. So it's just, it terrifies me that this is a possibility, and I didn't expect to have to come up here, but honestly, I need to present my point of view, and this is just, I need to do this. So please support this ordinance, but I mean, okay.
Jeremy DiMario, and then Wyatt Mann will be the last speaker.
Jeremy Demisho. I live at 322 Timber Trail, been a resident for eight years, proud father of Spencer. And I just want to say I support this ordinance wholeheartedly for every reason that we've heard this evening. And also, just to, I guess, relay some fatherly wisdom that I give to my kids, that life is a series of tests, tests of right and wrong, and there's clearly one answer here, a correct answer, and I ask for you to please pass this ordinance and support our community and all the residents within it.
Wyatt Mann.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Wyatt Mann. I was a resident of Batavia throughout my childhood and now have once again found myself in a place that has always felt like my true home. The individuals being targeted by ICE deserve to have a home as wonderful as Batavia, just as much as any of us in this room. What ICE is doing is detestable, and I support this ordinance and all of the speakers who have been in favor and would ask that you do the same. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for getting through this night. These meetings like this are never easy because there are always two sides to everything that we debate. So if there's anybody else on the council that wants to say anything tonight, then we will decide what we'll move forward with.
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I look, I always look at things from the legal perspective. I mean, that's just kind of the way I am. There's been lots of discussion regarding history of immigration. And also, I wouldn't have been a lawyer, I would have been a history teacher. So I like the discussion about history. I actually grew up next to a house that had the Underground Railroad in it, and we used to go and tour it, and it was real cool. It's Goslin's house, yeah. Alderman Loewen stated from the very beginning, this is not about immigration per se. Everyone would agree that federal immigration laws, as they currently exist, are different than they were 200 years ago. However, at the beginning of this discussion, Alderman Loewen also freely admitted that what he was in part doing was grandstanding. And that's not the purpose of this discussion. It's not the understanding of what this ordinance is for. It's just simply not, it's, it's, it's not a reason to have anything symbolic here. That's not what the city council is really supposed to do when we're talking about serious subjects like this. And the wrong way, there's a right way to approach this and a wrong way. The wrong way is to make this political, calling people fascists, racists, saying that there's an authoritarian regime, saying there's a purge, saying, you know, calling it a welcoming ordinance, anything that just motivates one side or the other. All you're doing is forcing the other side to think differently from you because you are calling names out. It's not what the purpose of any of this is. It's what's dividing this country as we're looking at it right now. It's not the way to go about this. That's the wrong way. What we have to remember is this. What we're talking about is, this ordinance is very limited, and it's, and it's not really focused on what many of the comments were here, and I appreciate what everybody's saying. ICE is a federal agency. I agree that the actions that are seen on TV and the various stories that have been told here tonight are certainly upsetting. As Alderman Wolf just said, there's always different sides to every story. I'm not supporting one thing or the other in this regard, I'm just saying there's certain ways to approach this. So I've heard a lot about fear, being afraid. This proposed ordinance, the way, I mean, we don't even have, we don't even have a worded ordinance yet, but the way it would be would not do away with ICE. I don't think any, I mean, I hope everybody understands that. There's no way that we can do it. There's, I, I've also will say that there is supposed to be no comment currently. I listen to everybody talk, and I appreciate everybody's thought. It would solely propose that Immigration and Customs Enforcement, which is a U.S. federal agency responsible for enforcing immigration laws, may not use city-owned property as a staging area, processing site, or an operations. It would not unilaterally bar ICE from conducting operations or minimize interaction. Now, the reason why I'm pointing all this out is because what should have been said before any of this is, is that Batavia already follows the Illinois Trust. I'm not sure how many of you actually know what the Illinois Trust Act is. You can look it up at 5ILCS 805/1@sequential, okay? Now, the Trust Act, which we follow, Batavia follows this, it was actually put out on the Batavia website a couple of months ago. The Trust Act prohibits local governments and law enforcement agencies from participating in, supporting, or assisting federal civil immigration enforcement operations or allowing federal immigration agents to use local government facilities or equipment for their purpose. Therefore, what this already is, Batavia already upholds these state restrictions, which is codified in the Illinois statute. And what we're doing is we are following the Illinois Trust Act, which sets forth exactly what I just said. I mean, it's, it's kind of long, and I read these things as an attorney, but I tried to summarize what it meant just there. Basically, Batavia upholds the state restrictions, which says, the legislative purpose, recognizing that state law does not currently grant state or local law enforcement the authority to enforce federal civil immigration laws. It's the intent of the General Assembly that nothing in this act should be construed to authorize any law enforcement agency or law enforcement official to enforce federal immigration law. Okay? So basically, what they're saying is that we are not going, it's restricting, prohibiting local governments and law enforcement agencies, such as first responders here in Batavia, from participating, supporting, or assisting federal civil, federal civil immigration enforcement operations, also known, you can just say it's ICE. But we also have to have respect for lawful federal law enforcement activity, okay? There has to be respect for it. Some of the other things that you see on TV is when there's not respect. Some of the things that we heard tonight, where people are calling people fascists and racists, it's not respectful. I think everybody needs to be respectful and be bipartisan about this.
Just listen, this is not a dialogue. This is, we are listening to each other.
I appreciate everybody coming out to speak. Follow directions. We followed. Jesus. Excuse me. You can time me as long as you want. Can we clear the room then? And I can finish my statement?
We only timed the public comment. We can talk an hour apiece if we so choose. That's the way this works. So I tried to explain this at the beginning, that we are here to listen to each other. Please show the respect to listen to us while we have a debate about all of what we've heard, all of what we've read, and all of what has been presented.
Get up to the mic. Because it's very clear that nobody that spoke here, we had two people against and everybody else forward. And there, it's very clear that there's an eye-to-eye process. I'll leave, but it's very clear that you didn't want to listen to anybody that had to say here. And you, you are, you are, you are very respectful. I appreciate everybody for coming out to speak, but it's really a more narrow subject than the topics of ICE, immigration, racism, political parties, people not leaving their house, being in the streets, financial issues. This can certainly be a community that protects each other. Batavia is safe. It is full of allies, and that is what is already defined by the Illinois, by Batavia following the Illinois Trust Act, which sets forth exactly what everybody has spoken about today. That's all I'm pointing out, is that this is something where this, it's not about grandstanding or anything else. We already follow the Illinois Trust Act as Batavia. It is something that's very important, and I believe that's something that needed to be pointed out. That's what I was doing here. I wasn't attacking anybody. I wasn't saying anybody was wrong. I was pointing out that the Illinois Trust Act is in place, Batavia follows it, and it sets forth something that is not necessarily symbolic, not necessarily something that may not be enforceable, because this is already codified under the Illinois Civil Statute, 5ILCS 805/1@sequential. It's the Trust Act. I believe it's appropriate. I like it. I just wanted to point out to everybody that it is in place. It is something that Batavia already follows. We do respect everybody in this community. Batavia is a safe community. I've lived here for many decades. It's full of allies. And I just thought that sometimes we got a little bit off-topic here because this is only about a very narrow ordinance. It's not about the general topic of the other issues that can be addressed here. It's a very narrow ordinance, and it's a very narrow topic. And like I said, I appreciate everybody's feelings on this. We listen to everybody, but I think that as council, we need to just look at Illinois Trust Act and what the narrow ordinance would be, and whether it's appropriate and whether it's enforceable over and above what is already codified by the, by the state government. That's all I was saying. I'm not degrading anybody's views or anybody's, anybody's viewpoints at all. I just wanted to point out that some of you might not have been aware of what's already in place for the city of Batavia.
Alderman Lehman.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight. I know it took a lot of bravery for many of you to speak tonight, and I was moved emotionally multiple times. And I'm not an emotional person. I'm really not. And you, your remarks moved me, so thank you. I support this, the city of Batavia, moving forward with this, this ordinance. It is a statement of values. We are encouraging transparency, trust, and accountability in our town. I live and work, and I have my two students in town who go to school with people, and I can say from my own personal experience, from talking to my neighbors and talking to people I'm around, that this is an important issue and we need to be discussing it. It is true, people do not feel safe, and that should be concerning to us, and we should be discussing, how can we make Batavia, even if the world around us is burning, how can we help Batavia be a safe place for our community? So I will be voting yes on this tonight.
Yeah, I'll echo as well. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I wish we had this many people at, at all of our meetings. There's a lot of important things that we do here, and, and I appreciate everyone coming out, and I encourage you to continue to come out and see what we're doing and, and all that good stuff, above and beyond anything. that good stuff, above and beyond anything political, but stuff that's very important to the town. And so I appreciate everyone's time, and I appreciate the passion. I know this is not, this is not an easy topic, and I think there are many driving factors why we find ourselves in the position we're in. And I think Bill McGrath said it best in that this, this really makes me angry that we're even in this position as the city council of Batavia, because our elected officials at the top can't get the job done, seems so. So, you know, I, I just want to voice that, but at the same time, you know, without, you know, there, there's a lot of emotion around this, and, you know, I'm a data guy. I did hear some data. I did look up some data. I, I, I would like to hear from more people. I would like to hear from, you know, because again, I, I wish we had an honest media across the board in this country. We don't, and it's just a fact. And so, you know, I know there are real-world examples that, that folks gave, and those are 100%, you know, like Leah mentioned, you know, I was, I was moved by that. And, you know, that, that is not okay, some of these things. But one thing I want to maybe even toss the chief or staff at large is, is how will this change our behavior beyond, because I agree with a lot of what Alderman Solfi said in terms of the Trust Act. It's the first thing that came to mind when we brought this topic up was, well, wait a minute, we follow the Trust Act. I thought most of this is, is listed under there. How will our behi, how will our actions change above and beyond the Trust Act, say we do have sudden staging?
So largely, like you mentioned, Trust Act kind of governs our be, our response, it's our situation already. Primary changes would be kind of driven by the ordinance, being some of the examples that were reporting mechanism where if evidence of staging or something, all sorts of things would be kind of driven by policy.
And because I know this isn't going out on BATV, because we have some issues with the microphones, I think that those were important points that I'd like to reiterate that Chief just made. So what he said was that the city would follow and is following and has been following the Trust Act, which was, as Alderman Solfi stated. What we're seeing in these ordinances that were provided as examples is that there's a duty and obligation on behalf of city employees who witness the property being used for staging or for operations to report that. Beyond that, it really doesn't say what, what happens beyond the reporting of it. And so there isn't oftentimes in these ordinances articulated what enforcement looks like. I mean, I, I guess it would look like if the west side parking lot was being used as a staging area, I would go down and say, would you please leave? But beyond that, I don't, I'm not exactly sure that, I don't think that there are any powers that we have to forcibly remove people.
And, and I 100%, you know, especially you, Laura, being a lawyer, you know, trust you guys to make those calls and all of that. I forget what I was gonna say. Anyway, yeah, I, I, I just, I feel, you know, and this is again, this is a hard position. I, I hope everyone out there realizes that, you know, we're all human too, and we all definitely want to make the right calls, and sometimes those right calls aren't your initial gut reaction. So, you know, give, give everyone some grace here that's, that's going through this. But, you know, because the fact ours, you know, I, I heard a lot from a lot of people that, you know, didn't show up tonight, but, but felt, you know, kind of strongly in the opposite direction. So it's, it's hard, and I want everyone to respect everybody and, and know that we are not the federal government. We're just trying to do what, what we think is best. And as, as now I remember, as I delayed what I was gonna say, but, you know, as we enter into budgetary talks in this town, and we talk about some of the needs, when I talk to folks around the schools, and the mayor mentions 800-plus new homes coming in, and our schools are already boiling over, my question is, is are we prepared for any repercussions that possibly come to this? And this might be something for the, the city lawyer, but, you know, at what point is it obstruction? And, and at what point do we find ourselves potentially liable? Because let's just call a spade a spade, there are three more years of this administration, so, you know, it, it is what it is. I know everyone was talking about post this administration, but there's, there's still a lot of runway here. So is that something we find ourselves, you know, and we, we're not Evanston, we're not Chicago, and we're not a county. So I want everyone to keep in mind, and, and we need money in this town.
of facing liability for not passing a statute like this, that there is little likelihood of there being that type of liability, that it would be seen as cooperation. But the grants being at risk, while we had talked about the Anti-Commandeering Act before, you can't condition getting, being able to receive grants on cooperating with ICE. But that is like the, the legal matter, but the, the practical aspect of that is that if grants are withheld, either you don't get the grant, or you have trouble accessing the funding for grants that you've already been given, it takes a lot of litigation and expense and time and, and whatnot in order to be able to challenge those things.
Glenn Beck, you're next.
Thank you. Again, just wanted to reiterate my thanks to everyone who is here, who spoke, and who's still here. When we passed our strategic plan for 2024, 2025, the mission statement that we unanimously voted on was, "We empower a vibrant, sustainable, safe, and inclusive community built on trust, transparency, and collaboration with our residents and businesses. Through effective governance, we shape a future that fills us with pride in Batavia." And I wanted to reiterate that I'm filled with pride in Batavia right now, based on what I've heard here tonight. I want to act on whatever piece of legislation, symbolic, effective or not, that builds trust, that makes our residents feel safer, to feel more supported and held and belong here. Mission statements for all organizations get put to a test, like this is a test of our mission statement. Either we change our mission statement, or we, we put some teeth behind it, and this is one opportunity for, for us to do it. I will support the further discussion of what our ordinance could entail. Forgetting my last point, but thank you all very much.
Alderman Malay?
Yeah, I've been, almost a decade now, I've been coming to meetings in this room, and this is the largest crowd I've ever seen. And what I, what I will say to council, this seems to me to be the most important issue that I've experienced, that, that our citizens have come out and say. Thirty-nine people have spoke for, many very eloquently, that would do something about this, what's happening. Two people spoke against, and they were quite misinformed. I would point out that the Constitution applies to everyone. Now, but now, we would, we demand that our law enforcement follow rules. Why would we let some other law enforcement come in here and not follow rules? We're not saying that they shouldn't, that, that we're gonna stop ICE. We're saying, follow the rules, follow the Constitution, due process, our rights, and stop trampling on them. That's what this is about. And the fact that we have so many people, the most I've ever seen in a decade, come out here to speak about this tells us how important that is to our constituents. And so I remind all of you, we are here to make sure we make this the best Batavia can be, and I think an ordinance is gonna help that with what we're dealing with right now, this lawlessness of our federal government. They're breaking the law every day. For Christ's sake, they took down half of the White House. Seriously? What are we coming, what's this world coming to? We must stand up and push back in every way we can before it's too late. I will support this ordinance.
You had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I did have my hand up. So first off, thanks for coming out tonight. That is correct. This is the largest crowd I've ever seen here. You're gonna laugh. We, we make bigger decisions that affect you more financially than no one's ever here. So, so just, yeah, and the budget conversation is coming up. So having said that, you know, just some housekeeping stuff. The school board's talking about this, too. They, they talked about it just in their meeting a couple of days ago. They're a different animal, they're private property, and they, and kind of like Batavia, they already have stuff in place to kind of prevent some of the scenarios that we've heard tonight. So, so you actually do need a warrant if, if law enforcement goes on school property, and if you don't, you're trespassing. So that's just FYI. I am not on the school board, so I don't know. But, but I imagine there's a procedure in place. If you look at the school, if you ask them, I'm, I'm sure they're happy to tell you, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna continue the conversation next. Okay?
That's something that you brought up, and I want to make sure we clarify this. The city owns city-owned property. The Park District owns Park District property, and the School District owns School District property.
And library.
And the library owns the library property. So those are all separate entities. So just because we pass an ordinance, for one thing, does not mean it blankets every other public body.
And just two other things, okay? So this is, we are just discussing, right? So what that means, our next session, we're gonna talk about more stuff, more of the details, okay? We've been talking about ordinance tonight. I have not seen an ordinance yet. I just haven't, right? Because, because one has not been proposed to us yet, right? So this is the pre-ordinance conversation, it's not the ordinance conversation, okay? And then when we have the ordinance conversation, then it goes to the actual vote for the ordinance, right? So we're not quite done with this journey yet. And then thirdly, you know, city council, as an organization, we have the ability to put stuff to referendum, okay? So, so don't be surprised if it turns a different way as we talk about it, okay? And in a referendum, you know, what that would look like, I don't know. Just like I, just like I've never seen an ordinance, they've never seen a referendum, all right? So, so we still have a lot of talk, talking to do about...
I just want to clarify the statement a little bit ago. The city property doesn't belong to the city, the, the School District property doesn't belong to the School District, the library doesn't, property doesn't belong to it. It all belongs to the people.
It belongs to them.
And it's the people that are coming out to speak.
But we are the ones that are elected to make the decisions of what gets done.
But I want to clarify, who owns that?
Correct.
I think it was just for purposes of saying a resolution passed by this city council doesn't affect the other properties.
It's all your tax money.
That was Alderman Fiermbach.
Oh, yeah, Jeff Fiermbach.
I do want to make sure everybody else had sort of a first go before I have, before I have my second go.
Tony Malay.
Tony Malay. Okay. Does anybody else on the council want to speak on this? Alice?
I'll let Bob go first.
Bob, you can go first then.
I actually have a question. Is King County doing anything similar to what we've seen Cook and Will already put on the table?
I'm not aware.
Yeah, I have not seen anything publicly discussed on it, but I wouldn't doubt that they will.
Rapid-fire follow-up question.
They spoke about it earlier in the week, and all they did was reaffirm...
We need to not have people just shout out from the audience, because it's hard for the Aldermen are having their discussion right now, and they can't hear one another if people are talking in the audience at the same time. So, well, they didn't talk while you were speaking, we should afford them the same courtesy.
Thank you.
So, yeah, earlier this week, they reaffirmed, or may have been last week, but I read something that it, all they did was reaffirm what they're currently doing.
And then please walk me through the process. When we're here today, we are talking about this potential ordinance. Is a vote tonight to continue or not continue? Is it to draft? Walk me through it, please.
Oftentimes, it's to provide direction to staff about whether to proceed to the next step of drafting an ordinance for consideration, or in other circumstances, you'd say, you know, we've discussed it and we wish to not take further action on it.
I will say one last thing, and I just say thank you again to everybody that came, and I would say, based on my review as the engineer, not the lawyer, I thought the Will County approach was the best. I liked that they asked for face coverings to be removed on city property and proper identification to be worn. It just was a little thing that I liked in that version that was put to us by staff.
I'll also speak as an engineer supporting that.
Also, go ahead.
Alderman Lohman?
I wanted to hear what everyone else, you know, was thinking on council before I spoke. As the only person of color of Latin American heritage, I wanted to understand where you all, you know, what we're thinking, where you're coming from. My perspective, my reality is a lot different than yours. And I also was moved by many of the comments tonight, and also became emotional, because again, I identify with the group that is being targeted by ICE. I recently wrote a letter as a concerned resident to the school board, and I wanted to share it with you. I'm writing as a concerned parent and substitute teacher of BPS 101. I am urging you to take action and give direction to the BPS administration to provide a know-your-right training to their teachers and staff, and to designate schools as ICE-free zones. The staff that are in charge of our students must be knowledgeable of the rights that we, as individuals, have and their students. This is a critical time, when it has been reported that ICE has detained students in Aurora and Elgin, and there have been numerous verified ICE sightings at neighboring schools. Batavia needs to do what's right for the safety of our community and take action. I've heard firsthand from families of students who identify as immigrants or descendants of immigrants about the fear that they are living with day in and day out. The fear of being detained by a masked individual and being taken away simply because of the color of their skin, and because they speak a different language. I think we can all agree that a masked individual in an unmarked car detaining someone is frightening. The state of our country has me hypervigilant every time I step outside. I've been told that I am white-passing. I'm not sure if I agree with that statement, maybe my, my sound, the sound of my voice, but I am not white. I myself am a U.S.-born citizen and a descendant of Mexican immigrants, and I live in fear in welcoming Batavia. Every time I say goodbye to my children in the morning, I am concerned about them, because they look like me, too. I am concerned on my way to work. I am concerned every time I'm in my car, every time there's a tinted truck, out-of-state plates, every time I hear a loud helicopter hovering, every time I see a large, every time I am outside of my house. I'm concerned because of the way that I look and the color of my skin. This is my reality. And I say this as a privileged and documented person. Can you imagine how our students, families, neighbors feel that may not be documented or are in the immigration process and are not criminals? These people are our family, our friends. These people are our family, our friends, our neighbors, who are a part of our community, and they have rights. We are all guaranteed rights under the U.S. Constitution. Please do what is right and give direction to the administration to provide Know Your Rights training to their staff and designate school property as ICE-free zones. We need to keep our students, teachers, and staff informed and safe. So I shared that email because it encompasses my feelings on this situation that we find ourselves in. I've heard some of my colleagues here mention some things, and we all took this job, this role, as representatives of our community in each of our wards. And I've heard this time and time again, whether I was at the newly-elected workshop, you know, where I received some information, whether I was here at our retreat that we recently had, and all of us spoke to as our why. Why are we here? Why do we do this work? Why it's important to us? And it always goes back to our mission, our strategic plan, why we want to make Batavia better. In my process, and what I've learned on council in the short five, six months I've been here, is to speak with the community. And that's what I've done. With every single issue that has come to our table in the short time that I've been here, I reach out to the community. I ask those individuals that are affected by this decision and others that may be more indirectly affected by this decision. And I think that's been pretty apparent by my comments that I make during the meetings when I'm not speaking as me, Alice. I'm speaking as a person who has spoken to the community, and I'm representative of their comments. And with this issue, I've spoken to business owners, residents, community leaders, our faith leaders in various churches. And the support is overwhelmingly loud for us as a City Council to pass, I know we don't have the ordinance here, but to move forward with an ordinance so that our residents and our community feel safer as a whole. Some have said that this is symbolic. It is symbolic, but I don't view it that way. I view it as us taking action. I view it as us taking action for what's right. This is not a partisan issue. This is a human rights issue. My faith has taught me that human dignity is important. The Batavia that I know also knows that. I've been here for 11 years, 12 years, and I have never been more proud than tonight. Since I've been on council, there have been three meetings where it's been packed. And it was the Hispanic Proclamation Night, the Know Your Rights Night, and this night. And it warms my heart to see so much support for our immigrant community, because like the speaker who spoke earlier, who was of Mexican descent, who is an attorney, I related a lot with those comments as far as feeling not seen and not heard is what I look like. And I've also faced discrimination. My parents have faced discrimination. My brothers get pulled over all the time. They're, they serve in the armed forces, Marines, Air Force, they're veterans now. And they get pulled over because of the color of their skin. They follow the rules. So it's heartbreaking that we're dealing with this issue. The community has spoken loud and clear. As alderperson Malley has spoken to, we had 39 speakers today. I know for a fact many more did not speak because they were afraid. Our reality is we're living in fear. We have fear to show up to these Know Your Rights training sessions. We have fear to show up to governing bodies and speak up. Our community is hurting, and we need to show support to our immigrant community as well as our neighbors. I'm obviously in support of this, and I hope you will be, too.
Matt?
Real quick, Alice, thanks for being open with us, and thank you, everybody, for their, for your stories. Just making it real quick, because it's kind of hard to comment on something that we don't have in front of us. Reading through what was presented in the memo, I do, the one concern I do have is the line which pretty much follows each one of them regarding, there's no clear reinforcement mechanism once the mayor, city administrator, executive, et cetera, is notified. Sounds like we, this is something that we will be pushing forward as a further discussion topic. I think that's something that's very important to keep in mind, because I'd like to hear from both our legal side as well as the King County State's Attorney about what is enforceable. Legislation needs to be impactful and enforceable. If we can't enforce it, it's just going to add more questions to it, and it's going to put our law enforcement people at risk, because there's going to be a lot of confusion. So just a comment that I want to throw out there.
And Baron?
Yeah, so I just want to piggyback off of just a couple of points that Alice had brought up, you know, as we're kind of nearing this. And, you know, as I've heard along the way of, you know, talking about libraries and schools and parks, what I would love to see that, as a community together, that the community that came to us go to these other taxing bodies and start putting the pressure on them. And that way, as a community, we've got a park right across the street, and my fear is that we have somebody out there who's not familiar with our landlines and feels like they're safe in the park. And if we don't, if they don't have that same ordinance, similar to what we have, they may feel safe. And again, we want everybody to feel safe. So as a community, if we can get all of our taxing bodies to come together, I know Aurora had this conversation this evening. If they pass this through, let's put the pressure on North Aurora. Let's start connecting our neighbors. Let's connect ourselves all the way up to Carpenter'sville together. And that way, we create a big, huge line that are supporting our neighbors and that our neighbors feel like they can go to the other communities and shop and be free. So that is my ask for all of you. Also, if you want to know about Know Your Right training, Iser does provide it online. They just moved it this week to some evening shifts. It's about a 90-minute training. It's a great training. It's through Iser, and you can do it online. There's also, tomorrow I'm doing a food pantry training, so I can start delivering foods to our neighbors down in Aurora. That was something important to me. And right now, I do know that our food pantry, they have seen their numbers up. I know that there was word out there saying that the food is being spoiled. It's not being spoiled. The numbers are up. And if somebody in our area does not feel that they are comfortable going out, please contact the food pantry management to talk about options for them to get food into their Thank you.
Malone?
Yeah, so I would like to make the motion that we adopt an ordinance, we draft an ordinance, instruct staff to draft an ordinance that, one, addresses access to public resources. That includes no staging, no access to physical resources, and keeping our data secure from immigration enforcement. Second, that creates a reporting mechanism, maybe through the Illinois ICE Accountability Commission that was recently formed for when ICE is in our community. Third, that affirms, reaffirms Batavia's stance on immigration enforcement and inclusion. Fourth, that prohibits face coverings and that all in law enforcement must be clearly marked. And then finally, that directs staff to be trained in how to faithfully implement this ordinance moving forward. That would be my very long motion before the council.
Second.
Motion by Malone, second by, I don't know, Sleeman or Lowman, one of you. Your Honor?
Yeah, I would certainly encourage all the members of the council to support this ordinance and put it forth. I say that because I've had the opportunity in my other roles in this region to spend at least five or six hours in Zoom calls and in all kinds of conversations with all the other cities, because we're not the only ones that have this problem going. Every, there's a whole bunch of folk, other towns, have the same conversation going on, and everybody wants to make sure that they're doing the right thing. So I think there's going to be a fairly significant movement in the next week or two. You're going to see a number of cities, and I'm glad Batavia hopefully will be one of the leaders of the pack at this thing. The thing I will tell you, though, that in all these conversations I've had, there's been city attorneys and other legal people that other cities have brought in, and everybody says, well, we need to make a strong local force face about ourselves, that we're wanting to do this, we want to have this great appreciation for what is being done here. But when this thing starts moving up the wire into other levels of government, there's nobody quite sure where this is going to go, because if you, obviously, most of you are familiar with the U.S. Constitution. At the top, we have the Executive Board, the President, and the U.S. Congress. They're the ones that really have the power to make the moves and make comments. Then we got the state government underneath that, and then the local governments are at the bottom of the list, and we're the ones that probably have to enact all these things. And I hope, from what I've heard tonight, I think Batavia is on the absolute right track to adopt and put into place what we need, what we know we need to do. I just don't know what to tell you about if we have to, if somehow something happens and we have to move it up the ladder here and get it into some of the governments above us, there's concern about where this may go. And I guess I would suggest that some of you may want to talk to your congressmen and your senators and your state, you know, your local representatives and the county board to see where all those folks are going to go, because we're kind of at the bottom of the list here, and I think we're, always have been, and I'm very proud of this town for all the things it has done in the past and the history that's been recounted here tonight, going back to the Civil War days when we were the place where everybody was made to feel welcome regardless of the race, religion, color, creed. And Batavia's got a very, very proud history here, and I think tonight was just another proud chapter to add to that proud history. So I thank you all for coming and for what you've added to the conversation here, but just be cautious and aware that myself and a lot of other mayors in the area are not sure, as this thing gets moving forward, what may or may not happen. And if ICE wants to come in here, I don't know, it's going to be very interesting to see if we have really any ability to tell them, no, you can't come in. I'm sure that would go to a court test quickly, and we'll get all kinds of other responses to that. So this is not an argument that's over or a story that's over. It's got a ways to go. But I want to thank Alderman Wolf, who's the mayor pro temp and runs these committee meetings and all the rest of you. I'm very proud of the fact that every member of the City Council was here for the meeting tonight. So we've, we got everybody here that now has been educated as to what's going on and that we're going to hopefully move forward at the next meeting. Well, I guess we'll pass the, or bring the ordinance up for consideration.
Something that we'll vote on. I do want to say thank you to everybody that's here. These are never easy things to do, and I will say, over the 20-plus years that I've been on the City Council, there have been bigger rooms, and it got a lot crazier, where we had to have police help. So it does happen. And I will say, this is one of those times when I am proud to be a Batavian, to sit here and get a very diverse crowd of people to listen to each other. And that's not just on that side, that's up here as well. And that's something that I think I've become much better at over the years, because I've listened to a lot. I will say, I think we need to be careful when we craft this resolution for this ordinance, that we come up with things that don't duplicate what's in the Trust Act. I went through and picked out some of the stuff that's already been mentioned, and there are things that we've already done and we already have been doing with our police department where they don't communicate with ICE. They don't communicate with, on the federal level. And it says right in the Trust Act that the federal level does not have any ability to utilize any of our resources. That includes the property that we have. So all we're doing, I think, is trying to refine that to state and support what we think our community needs to hear. Whether that's enforceable or not, that might be a whole nother discussion. But I think it is something that we have to move forward with, whether or not it is enforceable. I mean, I think it's something that we have to do. Our community needs it. I've heard probably 90% for and maybe 10% against. So I've always felt like, even from the day I became Second Ward Alderman, I'm not just a alderman for the Second Ward, I'm a Batavia alderman. And I think that's a lot of people sitting up here around this circle here. That's the way we feel. It's not about our ward, about the city, about the people that are here. And we're going to make the right decision, and we're going to make sure whatever we come out with has support and passes. That's where I'll leave it.
Is the fact that we follow the Trust Act already in an ordinance? Or is it just a statement we've made?
It is a state law, and we follow state laws.
Yeah.
So it is not part of our codes.
It's not in our codes.
So this, I support that even if it does have some duplicate language, that, that's acceptable, because we don't already have it codified in Batavia.
Are you amending the motion?
Before we get to it, let's finish the comment, but what I'll say is, when we take our oath, we take it to follow the Constitution of the state of Illinois and of the United States of America. And when we do that, any law that's passed that's under that Constitution and found to be constitutionally verified, we would have to follow.
We also have Home Rule. So we can also.
We can add other things, but we have to originally follow those two.
Which we do. I'm saying we have Home Rule. We can add some things, and we can do this ordinance.
And that was all, my whole point was, is the Illinois Trust Act is something that already has, I mean, if you look at some of these ordinances, it already has all that stuff in there, I feel. So, you know, maybe, you know, a resolution saying Batavia follows the Illinois Trust Act, you know, something, a proclamation of some type would be also, you know, I mean, something that would be the same type of thing that is, that's already in place that we know is enforceable, because it's in Illinois code.
And I think that that's something that we're going to have to refine when we have the meeting with an ordinance that staff drafts for us. And then from that draft, we can amend it, change it, whatever we want to. We've done that enough on a million other subjects.
I was going to call the question.
What? Going to call the question?
Okay. That's fine. So let's do a roll call. Malone?
Yes.
Sulfur?
Yes, to draft some, this is about drafting some general ordinance for everybody. Yes, yes. Aye.
Wolf? Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Ferrenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Malley?
Aye. Motion carries. I would like to say one more thing to people. I've seen people all night with cameras and everything else on. This is available. It's been taped. It will be on YouTube, and it will be on the VATV portion of YouTube, VATV 1017. So if you want to see it, you want to share it, that's where it's at. And again, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We're not done.
I know, we're not done. We're never done.
We're not done. We've got to hold it. Oh.
That's okay. I stayed up and watched all eight hours of that game last night.
Ironically.
There you go. I don't know, was it seven or eight hours I stayed up last night to watch that game?
I did. I fell asleep during part of it, but I woke up when he hit the winner. I was like, oh, okay, somebody won.
Scott wants to continue the executive session to a future agenda.
Scott, do you want to continue the executive session, or do you want to do it after this? We can do that. Okay. Not time-sensitive.
Not time-sensitive. Okay, we will move on then to city council updates, project status. Laura?
Yeah, I have a report here. It's four pages, single-spaced. I'll begin.
You have three minutes. Can I have the timer?
Yes, I have three minutes, and that was 30 of them. Now, okay, so I just wanted to let everybody know that the city did a tabletop exercise this week in conjunction with King County Office of Emergency Management's, and it offered us the opportunity to test out our current emergency management plans. We set up an emergency operations center and was an opportunity for all of the different departments within the city of Batavia to simulate what it would be like to respond to a crisis in our community. And I was really proud of the way that the departments worked together. We have spent the last year and a half preparing ourselves to be ready to do an actual tabletop, and it went very well. But I, you know, I will say, and this is what should come from these things, is that there were a number of things that we identified, things that we can improve, things that we could put in place so that should an incident of that type actually happen in our community, we'll be even better prepared. But I can say I'm kind of proud that the county OEM staff who were there said, you guys did a really good job. So, but pat everybody on the back for the job that they did. Everybody who is over at the staff table was part of that exercise on Monday. We have received complete application documents for 400 South River Street, which is the residences at River Street. So staff has begun their review of that project. We are setting the public hearing for the South River Street Corridor Plan Draft at the November 19th Plan Commission Meeting. And then also, Winding Creek Subdivision will have a Geneva Park District park located within its borders. I know this sounds strange, and it comes as a surprise to many Batavians that the school district borders and the park district borders and the library borders do not follow city, city boundaries. All of these decisions were made 100 years ago. And then Wendy and Craig Hansen attended the IPALRA Annual Conference. That's the Illinois Public Employee Labor Relations Association Annual Conference. It's an excellent organization and a really valuable update that is provided there. And then also Andrea Pedraza and Dave Hartnett went to the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network Annual Conference. Electric presented the draft IRP and will be opening public comments starting on October 31st with an open house meeting planned for December 9th at 6:00 prior to that committee of the whole meeting. The Peace Bridge is closed right now because of some work that is being done on the ramp. We have tried to do that as little as we possibly could, and we'll keep it closed for as short a period of time as possible. The Native Planning Bed on the east side of City Hall started last week. We are going to be beginning the Webster Street remediation on November 3rd. Take a look at the monument signs that have been installed over the course of the last two years. And now there's beautiful landscaping surrounding them. All of that got put in this week. On, let's see, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board announced that 2025 Body worn Camera Grant. So we're beginning work on our grant application there. We were also informed that we've been awarded grant funding for the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority Less Lethal Alternatives Grant, which is administered by Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm Systems. The department was awarded a package of six Axon Tasers, seven packages totaling almost $18,000. And Deputy Chief Johnson is working with our consultant ACS on a federal grant application for ballistic vests. So kudos to the police department looking for those opportunities and making applications for those grants. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura? Anybody have any other business?
I would like to have a future discussion on our procedure regarding items that are put on the agenda and if that aligns with our current mission and value statement. In our code, there is a procedural that is set out, and I just would like to have a discussion with all of council to review that. So if I could get a couple other alderpeople that would join me on that discussion?
Yeah, join. And then one thing I would like to add, and I need to know where these people, like, live, whether it's like in Batavia or somewhere else, because it's really.
Who are we talking about?
The speakers. Like, what town do you live in?
Not legal.
Not legal?
No, we can't even ask for the address. We can ask their name because they have to give their name for that, but you cannot legally ask it. I've said it many times during things, and when this came to me tonight with the address listed on there, we need to remove that. Because that's truly not legal anymore. I don't remember when it changed, but when I first started on the council, everybody had to give their address.
That's why Bill McGrath still gives his address.
Well, yeah. Right, and people can volunteer if that's fine, but we cannot legally ask for that. And that changed, I don't know, over the last 22 years.
And not even the town, nothing?
No.
That makes sense.
You can't. And, you know, whether that's good or bad, I mean, unless you're Susan Stark and you want to yell at somebody that's not from Batavia, then you can do that.
Got it.
Okay. Oh, I know it's still rolling. I'm not worried about Susan. It's like she's going to call me up and go after. I'm not worried about it. We did decide to move executive session to our next meeting. We can do that at a council meeting or whatever. Whatever, whatever next meeting is, we can have an executive session to discuss that. Okay, Monday night. And again, thanks, everybody. It is not easy to run these meetings. You only got me for another two years, and then somebody else gets to do this. It is not easy. All those.